Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to bring the meeting of the board supervisors back to order. It's just 1:29 and a half on Thursday afternoon, November 1st. We're on item number 25. This is for possible action to determine that Waste Management of Nevada has proposed the best value for collection services in response to the request for proposals issued June 26th of this year and to direct staff to enter into negotiations with Waste Management of Nevada for solid waste recovery and recyclable materials exclusive franchise collection services. Who's going to do this? Rick, are you going to, Mr. Cooley? Oh, disclosure, excuse me, Supervisor Budkowski, disclosure.
NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private commitment, I am a partner in the real estate brokerage firm, NAI Alliance Carson City. In that capacity, my office represents two of the five bidding companies in acquiring real estate locations in anticipation of being able to receive the waste collection contract. Although Waste Management is not one of the companies my office represents, I feel that the judgment of a reasonable person in this situation may be materially affected because my firm's clients may be considered for the contract if the contract is not awarded to Waste Management. Therefore, I will not be voting on this matter.
Are there any other disclosures? Now you can go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Budkowski is going to stay at the board, at the dais, so, okay, go.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Supervisors, Rick Cooley, Operations Manager for Public Works. We're here today to take the next step and see if we can get a recommendation for a new hauler. One of the things I wanted to add was during this process, we had everybody sign an agreement, saying they wouldn't communicate with anybody, so that's why you guys probably haven't heard anything. So today's going to be really the first day that they're going to, now that this part's happened, that they're going to want to come up and speak to you guys. So I know there's several people, I think, that are going to want to come up and speak during public comment, so.
You know what? Members of the audience? I'm going a little bit too fast this afternoon. Can I ask you just to hold tight while we do one public comment, please, before, because I promised it's on art, doesn't have anything to do with you folks. But I'd like to just, just like to sit, just sit tight, and then we'll put this, hold this in abeyance, and then come on up. We'll do public, I apologize.
Art and waste disposal. Totally appreciate the time. Do art. Because I love handing things out. Thank you. Oops, sorry, Karen. Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, and I had it on my brain, and then...
I'm Sharon Ross with Capital City Arts Initiative, and we're the organization that hangs the exhibitions in here.
Good afternoon, Sharon. Thank you for being here.
Oh, thank you. And thank you for the use of the space. This exhibition, we're thrilled with. It's a companion exhibition to the show that we have in the courthouse, which is the essay. Gig DePio is the painter, and his, actually, his friend, his neighbor, Eugene Rolfe, was in the Air Force in, for 25 years. He was an officer in the Air Force. He was stationed in Korea in 1976. He had a minor in anthropology in college, and he was very interested in taking photographs of rural and urban life in Korea during the '70s. So when Gig found out that all these negatives were up baking in the attic in his house in Las Vegas, they got them together, printed, restored them, and then Gig did four paintings in response to the photographs. So if you want to see more of Gig's work, go over to the courthouse. There's a lot of his wonderful paintings over there. But these photographs, I think, are a wonderful exhibition, a wonderful, shows the blending of how American culture can impact cultures in other countries. If you notice in a couple of them, the people are dressed in traditional dress, and some of, then some of the men are in suits and ties, so, and this was in 1976. So I think it, they say a lot about American influence. So the show will be here through the end of February, and tomorrow night, CCI has a fundraiser. We have a lot of art to sell over at the Adams Hub, and you are all invited, no tickets needed. And, any questions?
Anybody?
Okay. Thank you.
Sharon, thank you very much for all that you do. How are you getting along with Mr. Salinas and group?
Oh, Mark is amazing. We are thrilled to have Mark in Carson City. He's...
All right, so if I write a recommendation letter for him to get an award from his university, you're okay with that?
Yes.
On art?
Yes, yes. No, Mark's doing a beautiful job, and we're thrilled. Thank you all for having, making that available.
Very good.
Okay.
Thanks, Sharon.
Thank you, and thank you.
You know, these are wonderful photographs.
Good. Hope you enjoy. Thanks for letting me.
Thank you, and I apologize. I should have caught you earlier there. Okay, now we'll go back on regular agenda, and we'll have, by the way, we'll be having public comment on this item as well, as we go through, and we'll have public comment at the end. Mr. Cooley, now, thank you very much for...
You bet, no problem. So, yeah, so I know some folks are going to want to speak throughout, so we will do a quick presentation. Chris McAffey with Vasquez, Sloan Vasquez-McAfee is with us to present that, and then we'll be able to answer any questions you have. We made one, there was some comments we got, we made on one of the slides, just one slight adjustment, we added the current rates for residential on the slide you'll see, just so you guys have that to see, look, the only difference from your packets. But other than that, I'll turn it over to Chris, and we'll go from there.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Supervisors. Thank you for having me today. We've reached, we're near the end of this process, and I'm pleased to be here today to share the results of our evaluation of the proposals that were submitted in response to our request for proposals. We had five solid companies participating in this process. CNS Waste Solutions, Eagle Valley Environmental, which is a group of local companies and others, Ulssess Waste Services, Recology of Carson City, and Waste Management of Nevada. We had process goals to maintain the integrity and to ensure competition in this process, and I'm pleased to say that I've not heard of any issues. All of the proposers participated as required, submitted excellent proposals, and complied with our request throughout. We're also pleased to see the competition that was stimulated through this process. Program goals really reflected the feedback that was gathered from the community through the stakeholder input. We had the questionnaire that was, that was well responded to, and then we had all of the community meetings where we learned a lot from the community about what they wanted to see moving forward, what their preferences were, and then, of course, we had your input and direction. We took that input and drafted an RFP so that the results would be responsive to where Carson City sees itself now and moving forward over the next 15 years. According to your direction and to staff input, the evaluation criteria was set forth in this manner. Company qualifications and experience were 15% of the total available score. The proposals for collection services, the services that were offered and planned were 35%. The company's implementation plan and their capability of implementing the services they proposed was another 15%, and then the cost proposal was the final 35%. We did also note the responsiveness to the RFP to ensure that all the requirements were adhered to, and we also noted any exceptions. In particular, we looked to make sure whether or not they would materially impact the services that were required. Here's the evaluation results. As you can see, Waste Management came in first with 961 of the possible points. CNS came in second with 939. Recology came in third, Eagle Valley fourth, and Ulssess in fifth. And really, the closeness of the scores, especially among the top four, just shows the quality of the companies and proposals that were brought forth. We wanted to discuss the residential rates and also some of the differences in the proposals. You can see here, Waste Management proposed a rate of 1759 for standard service, which is the 96-gallon waste cart, green waste cart, and recycling cart, with the first additional green waste and recycling cart offered at no additional charge. CNS is at 1795, Eagle Valley at 2058, Recology was at 2014, and Ulssess at 2390. Next, you see the low-income senior rates, which I think will be a great option for those seniors who qualify. Next, we did offer a good amount of flexibility in how the yard waste was proposed. We wanted to get as, really as much creativity and allow for each of the proposers to offer what they thought was the best strategy for implementing service. Three of the companies opted to include yard waste as part of the standard service, and two of the companies opted to not include the yard waste as part of the standard service, but add an additional charge, and so that's listed. Four of the companies, everyone but CNS, proposed bi-weekly recycling and green waste, where they would alternate weeks. CNS had a very innovative proposal where they offered to have weekly collection using a bifurcated collection vehicle where the solid waste and recyclables would be collected in the same truck. That would be delivered or emptied, and then the truck would come back and collect the green waste. This was an interesting and viable proposal. I especially liked the way they took into account the board's interest in preserving the roadways and ensuring that only two trucks or two passes occurred any given week, the same as the every-other-week service. So regardless of which company you chose, you'd only have two passes per week. However, I do want to note that the residents did say overwhelmingly that they preferred every-other-week recycling when we conducted the survey, so that was taken into account. For extra trash carts, so for those residents who have a very large household or, for whatever reason, desire to have an additional trash cart, you can see that the Waste Management rate at 691 is significantly lower than those proposed by the other companies. And then there's additional recycling carts after the first two that are available for those avid recyclers, although 296-gallon carts is a substantial volume of recycling and is most likely enough to accommodate most families. For the yard waste, we did have a lot of feedback about the fact that there are some households that generate an enormous amount of yard waste throughout the year. And so those households would have the opportunity to add additional carts for only 691 or for the rates listed here, which, which in any case is a great solution where everyone has access to yard waste services, but those who need additional will be able to bring that on for a small additional fee, but it isn't, that charge isn't being passed on to every household, just those that require it. And then we also had the four bulk items, and these are the rates for any extra bulk items after the first four. And Recology did propose an additional two included in their overall rate for six total per year. The commercial rates, most of the companies came in below the current rate. Waste Management came in much lower, and then CNS and Recology both came in a bit lower. So you can see there the differences in the rates. The fantastic thing that we find is that with the Waste Management rates that were proposed, they're significantly lower. What that allows for is for businesses to participate in the single-stream recycling. There's really not going to be a financial disincentive because of rates coming down that low on, on the commercial side. So that's definitely a benefit and makes, makes recycling even more viable for those businesses. However, all businesses would greatly benefit from the rates that are proposed here for the solid waste. Our recommendation is to enter into negotiations with Waste Management. They were responsive to the stakeholder input. Over 80% of the respondents to the survey were pleased and happy with their current service, but we did receive consistent feedback regarding communication, regarding the call center out of town, and some inconsistent service levels, especially with five bags, six bags, how many bags are going to be picked up any given week, and some of the different variables. We did incorporate responses to all of those concerns in the, in the draft agreement. So any company responding would have to meet the requirements of having a local call center, having greatly improved print and other communication, having consistent services so that residents know and businesses what the services are, when they will occur, what's available to them, and a number of different ways for that communication to occur. So we find that, not only through the development of the draft agreement, but also through the proposals, that those issues were addressed. And the agreement has liquidated damages if there are any breaches to the required services. However, it is our opinion that having a local call center will significantly reduce any of the concerns that were brought up during the town halls and the questionnaire input. There is strong services as far as the residential services. Every resident having the yard waste is, is a great option. We're excited to see that opportunity offered to the households, but also for those households, again, with the large volume, they have a low-cost option to add additional service so everyone can customize the service for their own needs. We frankly were surprised by the significant reduction in rates for commercial customers and find that to be a great benefit. It's wonderful when you can have a new service rollout for residential customers and you don't see the rates go up for the commercial customers, and in fact, they've gone down significantly. So it's good for business and also, again, really opens the door for businesses to participate in recycling without an economic impact. And then finally, the local call center and customer service office, enhanced communications, the sample materials, the implementation plan, the, the communication plan really rose to the occasion. I will say that we were pleased to see, and we received phenomenal proposals, just phenomenal proposals, the, the work that each of the companies put into really fine-tuning their services for the city of Carson City. Any number of these companies would be excellent service providers, and we wouldn't hesitate to, to say that they could come in and provide great service. However, when the same comparable level of service is being offered at such a great value to the ratepayers, it, it is, in our opinion, the best value to the city to go with our recommendation.
Hang on a second. Go ahead.
On that note, what assurances do we have as a city that those, that in order to get the contract, there weren't rate reductions that will only translate into rate increases in the near future?
The, it's a very good question. The, the contract is pretty ironclad. There has to be a significant extraordinary situation in order for any types of increases to be, to be requested. We did find that, and typically we find, that if proposals are within 10% of our benchmark pro forma, higher or lower, that there is enough, there's enough capital invested and the service level is of the correct, the correct amount to meet the needs of the city. So we did take a look at everything that, that was proposed. It was within the 10% limit that we look for. And frankly, when the incumbent comes in with the lower rate, with their familiarity with, with the community, it would be difficult to see them get any kind of a extraordinary rate increase approved by saying, oh, we didn't understand what service levels were required, what it took to serve the city. That's just, that, that is not a good argument.
Okay. And then, one other question. Considering that we had customer complaints before that you were aware of, why the willingness now to bring customer service on board as opposed to before?
The, yes, that's exactly why. When an RFP in order...
I didn't hear that. I didn't hear what he said. Would you repeat it?
The, this new service approach was required. Previously, it was not required under contract, and the city was very clear in its requirement that there be a local call center. That, that was a deal breaker. There had to be local call center, so that was put into the RFP. It's part of the agreement. And so entering into a new agreement, there's a whole new set of requirements, a whole new set of service stipulations, and there's a number of, of liquidated damages and other factors built in to ensure that what's been agreed to actually occurs. I'm pleased to see that all of the proposers took that seriously, and they all proposed a local call center for the city, which is, which is what, really what the city required and what's needed in order to provide the, the type of service that, that you all want to see and that the residents asked for.
Following up on Supervisor Aboud's comment, what does the contract, is, I assume you've got a boilerplate contract out there, or a proposed contract? What does the, what does that proposal say in terms of the ability to raise rates ongoing after the contract is negotiated?
The, the way that the draft agreement was, was established and approved is there is a standard yearly rate increase that is based on the CPI that, that goes through each year, and that is the only opportunity to raise rates, apart from if there were some sort of a significant change in legislation that had material impacts on the, a company's ability to provide service and, and do it in, in a way that it was sustainable. That, that's really the only type of, of an issue, or if there was some sort of natural disaster that wiped out infrastructure, or something like that. I mean, it would have to be significant, unanticipated, and something that they could not have anticipated. And that's pretty standard language for this type of a contract because of the length of the contract. There has to be some remedy if something were to happen or if laws were to change, if, typically, we see in this industry either recycling to be mandated or for there be a level, to be a level of performance that's required, so there'd be an opportunity to look at a contract if, if that requirement changed, or if the type of vehicles had to be changed because of legislation.
Supervisor Barrett has a question, but let me just follow up and raise him some questions. Suppose the recycle market goes, I mean, what you read, and China's not buying any more cardboard, dirt, and stuff like that. Suppose that goes belly-up. The market goes belly-up. What happens to single-stream recycling in this community?
We have incorporated language to ensure that the services would continue, and we actually provided a good amount of instruction prior to the proposals to say, let us know what you can collect. If there's some material that, that you have an issue with, let us know what that would look like. And there would be some remedies, say if it became, if it was not viable to collect a certain type of material, then the company could sit down with the city and negotiate whether or not they continued to collect that specific material based on the, the markets. But again, that's, that's pretty standard. As you said, the, the markets are very volatile, and with all that China's done in the past few years, things have greatly changed in, in the recycling industry. But we did review the plans that each of the companies had, and the majority of them had viable plans for, for their recycling.
So the risk of, the, the risk on that thing between the community and the company on recycling, that's going to rest with the company and not be something that's going to come back and bite us?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Supervisor Barrett has a question.
Thank you. I certainly can't read my colleague's mind, but I, it sounded to me like Karen was asking a question I'll just get right down to the nitty-gritty on. Why am I not to believe that Waste Management, I know it was a different contract, and they're going to charge with the traffic of a bear, so to speak, but why am I not to conclude that with these kinds of rate reductions and with the addition of a call service center, that they weren't charging too much in the past? Thought so.
Am I, am I on? Okay. Very good question. It is standard in, in the industry because solid waste contracts are so long, I mean, sometimes they're 20 or 30 years, that when you come in and have a competitive process, that the rates will go down. You see this pretty frequently, that there's, there's a correction that, that occurs. Now, why would a company propose lower rates or significantly lower rates? There's usually a couple of reasons. One, there's a long-term investment, so they're saying, okay, this is a 15-year contract that's worth X amount of money, so it's worthwhile to us to be competitive, not knowing where the others are going to, to come in and to really sharpen the pencil and come forward. So that's, that's one piece. The other piece is you have companies really want to be in the city. In particular, it appears, based on the proposal, that Waste Management very much wants to continue to operate in Carson City. Typically, when you see a, an incumbent do this, especially if the incumbent has contracts in some of the neighboring jurisdictions, when they look at the larger picture, it is not worthwhile to them to lose a local contract and allow another company to come in and have a foothold. So it's worthwhile to them in the big picture to do whatever it takes to maintain that contract because it's good for them and their larger business structure. With that said, could, could there have been lower rates in the past? Well, all the company can do is operate according to the prior contract, and that's why we come in and we take a look at this contract, and we provide as much of a competitive environment as possible, which, with the five companies that were competing, they all knew that everyone was going to come in with some, some pretty good rates, and, and they did. So the other piece is that especially with corporations, any of, any holding corporation, you're not going to see huge capital investments in something that's not required by a contract. It's just not going to be approved. The funding will go somewhere else. So it's not typically until you see the introduction of a competitive process or an RFP process and the requirement that, hey, if you want, if you want to participate, this is what you have to do, where a company will make the decisions to go ahead and have a local call center or roll out X number of carts or reduce commercial rates for those reasons. So those are some of the reasons that, that we typically see in this industry.
So when I look at your evaluation results, I see that the... So when I look at your evaluation results, I see that the collection services were equal. They both got 329 points for CNS and Waste Management. Yet I noticed that CNS actually offered to do weekly the pickup. And I know that you're, I guess what I surmised from yours is that Waste Management met the condition in the proposal that the public was, wanted it every biweekly. But they, is that because the public probably thought the cost of recycle was going to drive some things up? And so I don't know that the questionnaire is aimed at, hey, you can have single stream recycling and it'll be less expensive. Do you want it weekly or biweekly? But I noticed there was, is that why there's not a point differential? Or was there other things that made it the same? Because I really think one of the better options that we have is picking up the recycling every week versus every other. I mean, I don't know about many people, but it's hard for me to track my calendar, to put my stuff out. I'm just being real honest, right? I take my, it's not a cart now, but wouldn't it have been better to have it weekly considering that the price was so negligible? So it's just a question.
The residential recycling and green waste services were one of a number of factors that were looked at when judging the collection services proposal. And we looked at the collection approach. That included productivity and operating assumptions. We looked at the collection facilities that were proposed, the recycling program and the materials that were proposed, as well as the green waste program. And then we also looked at the public education and promotion program. So the score was a combination of all of those different components, and so there were other components of the Waste Management proposal or some of the other proposals that were scored differently. We did look favorably upon the CNS proposal to conduct weekly service. However, that comes at a cost to your commercial customers, the significantly higher rates for commercial customers. So in order to, because you have to look at it in a whole. We can't just take the single component. So while that is an attractive feature, it comes along with rates that, you know, you look at a three yard, two times a week, $234 compared to $333. So that's an extra $100 per week for that customer, et cetera. So we have to look at the entire proposal, all the programs, residential, commercial, et cetera. So that's why it came out that way. If we were scoring it just on residential recycling, then that would definitely be a factor.
Just to clarify, and then recycling, though, is also inside all of the commercial? Is that what I'm understanding? All of those get recycled every two weeks?
For biweekly? Oh, for the commercial, it's an optional service, and they can subscribe, and all proposers were required to offer that at 80% of their solid waste rate. So it's the same. You just apply 80%, so.
I need to ask a question. Okay. I need to ask a question to be clear. We have a commercial business. We have a bar. We generate a lot of glass. We separate our glass. In terms of pickup, single stream recycling, how this is going to work? Is it necessary to do that? And if it isn't, then they will charge extra for that biweekly pickup or whatever, which is needed?
I want to make sure we clarify. Residential service is the only service that has a biweekly component. So household, curbside, one week you put out your recycling cart, the next week you put out your green waste cart.
Right. I get that.
For commercial, it's subscription-based. So you can subscribe to once a week, two times a week, four times a week. You can have a one yard, a six yard, I mean, whatever size and frequency you want, then you subscribe and you pay the rate that goes along with that. It's 80% of that.
But my question is, currently, we separate the glass. Will that be needed at all?
It will be a single stream program. So you could put your paper, your cardboard, boxes, whatever you'd like to put in there.
Before you go on, why don't you, maybe I missed it when you opened up. Who was on the evaluation team from the city side? Who actually was scoring here?
The evaluation team was my partners, Joe Sloan and Enrique Vasquez. And then we came forward and we brought our evaluation results to the city manager, to the public works director, to Mr. Cooley, and to the attorney who was assigned to review and discuss all of the components and rationale for each of the scores that were put forward. And that was conducted in a several hour-long meeting.
So the actual scoring was started with the outside consultant?
Yes.
No city scores?
That is correct. They were reviewed and discussed, and all sorts of questions were asked so that we could go through and discuss each and every component of those scores.
All right. All right. Any other questions while we're going on here? Go ahead, finish up.
I'm complete. Sorry.
Any other questions at this juncture?
I do.
Go.
So I'm unfamiliar with, all of the proposers had an opportunity to indicate that they would take exceptions, and you noted that there were some for Waste Management. I'm assuming maybe all of them had different exceptions. But what are they accepting to? I mean, what service are they not going to provide or do that was in the RFP? It's difficult for me to judge without, what is it?
We, so the majority of the proposers did have exceptions. The larger corporations had very similar exceptions. The more local owned companies had fewer or no exceptions. The majority of the exceptions, in fact, I have a breakdown of them here. The majority of the exceptions were clarifications of language that did not change the intent of the language. So it would be the insertion of a word or a clause to further flesh out the language, but without changing the intent or the service. For example, there would be clarification on what organics is, or further clarification on adding separate definitions for residential or single-family collection service, commercial collection service, and on-call collection service. In the draft agreement, each of the different groups that received service were defined, and then collection service was defined, but the proposers asked that there be a combination. So very much focused on definition, no change to intent. The next set of exceptions were what we consider to be reasonable exceptions. So for example, there's a requirement in the RFP that the proposer allow the city to provide an insert to go with the billing. The proposer asked that it be stated that the insert need to be eight and a half by 11 and not increase postage costs. That's standard. So in other words, they don't want a 14 by 17 cardboard or, you know, cardstock to be sent. So that's sort of a stipulation. That is almost, that is the bulk of the exceptions are those that are clarifications, but they're reasonable, what we would consider standard, and actually things that we see in other agreements. The other exceptions that we consider material are as follows. There were three exceptions requested that further clarified or fleshed out what the city services would look like. So for example, there's annual community cleanups. We specified two cleanups plus additional. Waste Management asked that the number, total number per year be limited to four. And so that is something that we can negotiate and discuss. There was a request that we had said for illegally dumped items to be picked up within 24 hours. They asked, and again, these are requests that you consider making it a longer period of time, maybe 48 hours, because they're concerned that they would not be able to meet that, and they could be fined if they didn't meet the 24 hours, if that's what's in the contract. Another piece is that for the annual neighborhood cleanups--
I'm sorry, who was "they"?
I'm sorry. I'm going through the Waste Management--
All Waste Management.
Oh, these are exclusive to Waste Management. That was what you wanted, correct? Okay. We had language for neighborhood cleanups, and Waste Management stated that they've seen in other contracts where it works well, instead of having X number of neighborhood cleanups, where each of the supervisors is allotted 12 30-yard bins or the roll-off sized carts per year to allocate to any events or types of services that they see fit. That often allows it to be spread out nicely among all the different neighborhoods and gives flexibility in that manner. Again, you could say, no thanks, we want to keep it how it is, or you can say, that sounds like a good plan, we'll go with that. We don't consider that material because it really doesn't change the overall cost structure, and we can say no. There was request for additional language in the extraordinary rate increase. Anytime that language is looked at, we always go to the city attorneys and we discuss, and then it's part of negotiation. I have yet to participate in a procurement where there isn't some sort of pushback on that language, and that's why you have negotiations and not just sign right after. There was some question about indemnification, and this, again, is clarifying intent, and it's very standard where we did not state that once the material is dropped off at a facility, that the indemnification for the material transfers to the facility from the hauler. That is standard and should be added. So those are the types of exceptions. We do typically see from companies like Republic, Recology, Waste Management, you know, any of the bigger companies that have corporate attorneys, where we get a large number, and if it's reasonable, we consider it. If it's not reasonable, we push back. What we don't want to see is an exception that says we want to have a call center that's not in the city, or we do not want to provide 96-gallon carts, we want to provide 64-gallon carts. Or, I'm just trying to think of some that have occurred in the past where we had to take a ding, or, you know, really address the score for the proposed services because it was a material impact to those services. So does that answer your question? Okay. Okay.
So then, I think potentially, we're all concerned about the call center, because I got to tell you, it's probably the largest set of complaints that I receive about even doing a franchised agreement for 15 years because if we're getting bad service, why do you want to give a guy a contract? So I know that people in the community are not happy that they don't have responsiveness. So did anyone offer expanded service in the call center that was greater than what was required in the RFP? Like they'd staff it seven days a week, or longer hours? Or did everybody just respond the same? It's Monday through Friday, 7 to 5 or whatever?
I would need to go back to my notes for that particular piece. Once they meet the criteria, we, you know, we look at it in that way. I will say that the vast majority, 83%, were pleased with service or very happy with the service. There was that vocal minority that really wanted to see a local call center, and it really is a deal breaker for that not to occur. However, it's not optional for them. It's not a point of negotiation. This wasn't an exception that was brought up. It is part of the proposal, part of the agreement. This is a legal contract that requires a local call center and the local staffing, and so it's not, a change was made to the service requirement that would apply to anyone who wanted to do business in this city, and Waste Management decided to meet that requirement and to participate in a responsive way. Had any of the companies said that they would not, they would have been deemed non-responsive to the proposal because that was required. So that's not something that can be negotiated away, or that, you know, won't occur. It has to occur, or else there's breach of contract, and then all the remedies go into effect. So we, that feedback was heard loud and clear, and so it was incorporated very specifically into the requirements for any company wanting to do business here.
I believe that question was, did anybody go beyond what was called for in the proposal?
Yes. And I apologize. I don't have with me the, all of the different, what went above and beyond. Each of the proposals are hundreds of pages, and the variances are, our spreadsheets are enormous. So what we have to do is we have to grade in each of the categories, then put together a comprehensive score that looks at all aspects, and then as long as the requirement's met, then it's accepted. Now, if, had there been two companies that had scored the same, that had the same score, that had rates that were extremely similar, then we would come forward with, okay, these are the differentiators as you look to choose, but that's not the case in this procurement.
I think I know the answer to this, but just for the record, the, each of the proposers understood that there was just a CPI price escalator, and that was it. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct. And you may, just for the record, we had discussed having a CPI that the board could approve, but during the earlier discussions and as directed by the board, it was, the language was changed to, it will occur, so that there would be no question, and that surety is part of what brought in some great competition. But that was directed by the board, and that change was made and brought forward to the board in the final packet and was discussed in the meetings.
So it's not mandatory that they take the CPI. The company could say they don't want it, but they're entitled to it if they want it?
Correct.
Okay, but it's not mandatory?
No, no. I wanted to clarify. It's not mandatory. However, the, they can't come forward and say, here's the CPI, and it's capped. They can't come forward and say, here's our application for the CPI, and the board say, sorry, we don't want to give it to you this year.
Oh, no. But again, they could not, CPI could have gone up 3%--
Certainly.
--and they don't have to implement.
They do not have, they do not have to request it, but when they put in an application, as long as they follow the rules of the application, then--
I just wanted to clarify that. It's not a--
Yes. Yes, I apologized. Yes.
Perhaps they would be sharpening their pencil again if they did that and forewent the increase.
It might be a little premature, but what is, for Dan, Dan, learn at hand? If there's a vote today to enter into negotiations with Waste Management, is there a remedy for a bid contest to the other folks?
That's an excellent question. I think for the RFP process, there is no bid protest. The reason I say that is because this is, A, not a bid, and also because under the provisions of NRS Chapter 244, the governing body of this city, the Board of Supervisors, has that inherent statutory authority to grant an exclusive franchise agreement. Compare that with, for example, your normal bid process, which is also laid out specifically in NRS with respect to protesting awards of contracts under 332 or 338, which would be for purchasing contracts or for public works and construction contracts. That's specifically laid out. But as I said, for 244 purposes, that's an inherent statutorily derived authority of the governing body of this local jurisdiction to provide an award exclusive franchise agreement. the governing body of this local jurisdiction to provide an award exclusive franchise agreement. So this hearing is essentially, you know, the opportunity and the venue for any member of the public to come up and place any sort of a quote-unquote verbal protest on the record. Certainly, they're invited to provide written statements as well, but as far as a statutory and official bid protest, which would in fact, I suppose that would act in operation as a stay on the proceedings, that is not applicable here for an RFP.
So there's no independent right of appeal around, I mean, there has to be some process where the decision of the board is subject to challenge.
Well, you know, I think I would probably just turn to your common law doctrines. I suppose, you know, if somebody wanted to view this as a final decision of the board and, for example, file a petition for judicial review or file, you know, writ mandamus for injunctive or declaratory relief, they can certainly do that. I am not suggesting that as an avenue, of course, but I suppose you could always seek to, you know, the wisdom of the court to provide some sort of a remedy that way.
Well, I think it's beneficial to clarify what, you know, what the rights and liabilities and obligations are. I get you. So what you're saying is there's no statutory right of bid protest under this type of contract, but there may be an independent right of review, either judicial review or writ?
That's correct.
All right. All right. Yeah, go.
So maybe, can you go back to the commercial rates? So I want to make sure I have a clear understanding. So first and foremost, while the rates look significantly better for Waste Management, what I don't have is context to it. So how many commercial accounts? I mean, is it significant savings? If that makes sense. Do we have 10,000 commercial customers that are all using the yards? Or do we have 500 commercial accounts using the yardage? I mean, I'm trying to get a real feel for it significantly was a better bid versus it's not as significant as it potentially looks dollar-wise.
So, yes, there's a few components to this. First, the services that you see listed are your most common services. So we asked for rates for each service level for up to six times per week, but for those services where only one customer gets that service level or zero customers, I didn't include that. These are the customers, this is where you have 100, 250, these are the most common. So this is where you really see the difference. When we look at the overall, when we evaluate the cost, we don't compare the rates. We want you to see this and it's important that you have this information. We look at overall rate revenue. So we take all of the service levels and we are able to take, to come up with a first year rate revenue and compare the revenues. So that way, you don't have, we want to make sure that you don't have a company put in a really low rate for, say, a three-yard one time a week, but maybe lots of customers do a four-yard six times a week and they made that one super high so that they make it up there. We go through and we look at every single rate and make sure that they're formulaic, that there's a rationale, that it's consistent throughout. Then we take the overall proposed first-year rate revenue and we compare that. So there's a number of counterbalances to make sure that any given way, no one's getting away with something, so to speak.
Could you just expand on that a little bit? In other words, the rates, the initial rates here, they're a baseline rate under contract here. Did you just mention that somehow you did some sort of independent, not, some sort of analysis that said that those baseline rates were actual market rates or proposed market rates and not just rates made in order to accommodate an RFP?
We do look at the reasonableness because we require the costs and all of the operation assumptions. So we look at the reasonableness, which is one component. However, what I was trying to explain is that we take a look at the overall rate sheet. Each service level times each frequency, we look at it in whole and we make sure that it's consistent. So in other words, you don't have, you don't cherry pick certain rates that we might bring forward and have those be unnaturally low and make up for it in another portion of the overall rate sheet. So we did go through and make sure that each of the haulers had a consistent set of rates and that there wasn't gamesmanship, so to speak, in how the proposal was set forth. I did want to mention, Mr. Mayor, when, we do come forward and bring a recommendation based on the input and feedback, based on the evaluation criteria that's put forth. The reality is, we had phenomenal, I mean, I'm just, really, I was so impressed that the companies that proposed are outstanding. CNS is an outstanding company with a phenomenal proposal. Recology as well. I mean, they really put forth great proposals. Eagle Valley, theirs was, really hit all the marks. We have to take in whole the proposed services and evaluate what's the best value. And so that's what our recommendation's based on. However, you can pick any company that you prefer and frankly, I don't hesitate to say that you would receive outstanding services and a great transition from any, I'll just say, the top three. Phenomenal service. However, it would be at a rate higher and so if you're able to get great services at a better value, when we look at the whole, that's why our scoring is as it is. But any of the companies that we've rated are outstanding. You have that opportunity to choose any of them, but the greatest value to your ratepayers is the proposal that we've scored as such.
Thank you. I think, I don't know that we've exhausted the questions for our consultant, but I'm interested in the process that got us here in relationship to our public works people. I know you weren't the scorers, but you had this big meeting and went on for some time. I'm curious as to what our staff feels in relationship to this situation. Are you in total concert with the recommendation of the consultant? The meeting would suggest you are, but is there anything you'd like to bring to our attention at this point?
Yes, no, when we got together, it was running through the numbers and running through all the individual parts and pieces. We were all in agreement that it was kind of, it really made it, really made it difficult to go any other direction than the direction we're recommending. I mean, it was when you look at everything in total of what we asked for, what they're proposing to provide us, and everybody provided it, nobody came out and said, "No, we're not going to do this and that," which a lot of times you do see. But when we looked at it all, it was kind of hard to go any other direction. I mean, the numbers, when you divided them up, looked at that component and you divided, you looked at all the services, they gave us exactly what we were looking for. We were all in agreement that this would be the recommendation.
Reason I ask is my previous question regarding the last contract with the group you've recommended here. We've had them here for a long time. I don't say they've given bad service, but I find it really hard, and I didn't mean to sound sarcastic, though I think maybe in my head I was, when I used the phrase you used, "Sharpen the pencil." But I'm just, you know, we have had a long period of low inflation and I understand large companies, I understand how they operate, but it's really hard to think that 15 years on, or how many years on we're talking about here, that we can sharpen our pencils that much when, of course, we face a period going forward, another 15 years, that may bring us anything in regards to inflation. We haven't had much inflation. So I just ask these questions out of skepticism.
John, I might just add to your previous question. The questions that were asked here today are the exact same questions that we asked on that day. So it's, we were feeling the same way, know that. And so I think it's very appropriate, what's being discussed here today. I will also add that we were, we all fell out of our chairs. We were shocked when the results came in because it is not what we were anticipating. But when we went through and, you know, step by step, what we went through as to how the evaluation happened and then the review of the cost proposal, we did, we fell in line with recommending that what their conclusion was the same as what we had. So, and I think the thing, the overarching issue with our current hauler has been, you know, nobody likes to pay any amount any month. We didn't hear so much about the cost, but the complaints have been on the customer service side. So, but we knew that before the proposals came in and so our direction, as was stated today, was to make sure that this new contract going forward, you know, everything is in those details in terms, what customer service means, something different to everybody, obviously, but we need to put in the contract something in terms of customer service that we're comfortable with, that we can then enforce with whoever the hauler is. So even before the proposals came in, we felt confident that that contract would be written to handle that customer service component. Little did we know that our current hauler would, you know, would come in and in our mind appear to be the successful firm, but that customer service component, we wanted to take that completely off the table so that, I mean, we didn't want to deal with it in the future any more than you wanted to deal with it in the future in terms of customer service complaints.
Thank you for that, Darren. I find it interesting because the residential rates are fairly close to each other between the top two and the service. So this seems to be a cost factor that's trying to lure our business community to say, "Oh, this is the best deal." And of course, our business community is going to be dollar-oriented because there's not a great deal of difference between the residential cost of one and the other a few cents, which mounts up over the years, but nevertheless. And they're all stuck with the consumer price index thing. So do you, did you ask questions about whether the winning bidder was trying to appeal through our commercial sector or does it matter to you?
Yeah, I don't, I think our questions were the same as yours, is why, why is this component, the two top firms are equal across the board except for the commercial rates. And so our questions were the same as yours, is why, why is that? And it was just to the answer that you heard, here are the possible reasons that a company would do that and try and make sure that they retain the contract. But other than our speculation, I mean, we don't have the answer to that, but we did talk about what are the risks? I mean, what, okay, so what could be hidden here that we're not seeing? And as was explained, we couldn't come up with any because it's, you know, it's an ironclad contract. It's, that's what the rate is and here's the increases each year and there's, that can't be negotiated. So we were surprised, but we were comfortable with it.
Thank you.
So potentially, maybe you could put Table 7 up on the screen for the public. I don't think you did it. That's the one where you were talking about the actual revenue that is done, the commercial revenue for Waste Management was $3,604 and for CNS it was $5,253. And so I guess that, you had told me that you had benchmarked it yourself and anybody that was plus or minus 10% of what you benchmarked. And so I guess I'm going to follow up a little bit on that. It just seems that the commercial rate or revenue from Waste Management is significantly, which is why they're winning the bid. I mean, it's a million five less in revenue. So I just want the public to understand, that's why Waste Management scored because they came in and maybe you're right, maybe they just made the decision, maybe I've been making a lot of revenue in that area and we can afford to cut it down and win the bid. I don't know, but it's significant and you indicated that if they were plus or minus 10% of where you benchmarked, that you actually ascertained why or really looked into that because that's huge in comparison to all the other vendors.
We, well, two pieces. First, they were the lowest residential, so it's not as if they're, by a small amount. However, they were the lowest and the lowest. It's not that residential is higher and commercials lower, so that is correct. But it's CNS and Waste Management were very close in their residential rates, except for the additional trash cart. There's a rather large difference there. When a proposed first-year rate revenue is within 10% of our projections, then that's good. So they're, you know, 4.2% lower, that's pretty much right on. The others were, I mean, Eagle Valley and also say that they had higher rates. So really, we're looking at Recology and CNS that came in higher.
By over a million? That's not 4% difference?
No, it's, and this is very typical in procurements. Everyone has a different strategy in how they're going to go about.
Right, that's what I, but I think it's important for the public to understand that they beat the other bidder by over a million five in the commercial revenue sector. And I want to put it on the record so that people understand, again, it's what the bidder did and that's a million five to our commercial industry. So for me to decide whether to reject it, honestly, to me, the residential was within $80,000 and I'd have paid the $80,000 revenue-wise from the residential to get the weekly pickup, to not have to worry about which day it is that I roll my card out. Because, so I thought that was a lot more consistent, but it's a million five in revenue to our commercial sector, which lets the businesses have a lot more money, maybe to give pay raises, who knows? But I could, one can only hope, but there's a million five, right? So I just wanted the public on the record, because that's not one of the tables that you put up, and that normalizes what I was talking about earlier. Well, what is that, two carts of this, five carts of that? It's a million five in the proposal. Okay, thank you.
I think I know the answer to this, but did you look at any of the internal rates of return that these companies might make on the rates that they proposed?
We did, and now, there's components that we certainly keep confidential that are listed as confidential. That's another piece of why this isn't.
What I'm getting at is I want to know if you were able to gauge that, then here's where I'm going. You know, I assume that the rates that are here are cost-based rates to them, to the, I mean, that's, they've figured out what their costs are, what they want to earn in return on their money, and that's how they get to these rates. I mean, they wouldn't, but I'm always, you know, and some people will say, "Well, nobody would ever propose anything but cost-based rates because that's what they do." On the other hand, I'm always reminded about Costco one time selling 30 cent United States government stamps for 28 cents. How do you do that? Well, it's a lost leader to get in the market. So there are times when people will intentionally go against economic grain for a lower cost and I just want to know that you're comfortable that's not happening here.
I apologize, I don't realize it times out. We are comfortable, we review and analyze all of the proposed service levels, the infrastructure, the capital investments that are going to be made. You often see, you typically see an incumbent coming in with an advantage in a couple of ways. There's an intimate knowledge of what it takes to service the community and there's existing infrastructure. There's a number of other components. You have, for larger companies, they frequently have negotiating ability with truck manufacturers, cart manufacturers, et cetera, that can be advantageous. What typically works against them is the rate of return that's required by their corporate folks, so that oftentimes will balance things out. You have here a situation where a concrete change in customer service You have here a situation where a concrete change in customer service was required. So that it's not a situation where a company's saying, we're going to do better. They have to make a concrete change. I mean, they're, they're having to open a local office. So there's a remedy to what was, to the feedback that was received from some of the folks who, who had issues with inconsistent service. Because of that concrete change, along with the very explicit language in the contract, we feel comfortable in saying that you will have a different experience moving forward. Had none of those changes occurred, had we taken the same contract and said, everyone propose the previous contract that did not have those requirements, we'd just be taking their word for it. So that gives us the assurances that we need and the legal requirements to, to provide these services. It's, it's a very good proposal as far as the rates. However, we've managed procurements where folks come in 30% lower than our, than our benchmark. And that's where we have to look and, I mean, we count the number of lifts per hour per truck that they're projecting. We, all of these, these components that, that are brought in and there's a lot of red flags if it's 10% or more lower. It's 4% lower. It's, that's within our margin of error, so to speak. It's, it's a reasonable proposal. Now, the risk that incumbents take, and again, I'm just providing this as information, we serve at your pleasure and we will assist with the negotiation with any company that you choose and, and again, you have phenomenal companies to work with here. Incumbents face the challenge of if they come in with not low enough rates, then others are more competitive and have better rates than them. If they, if they significantly lower rates, then the decision makers say, well, then why were the rates as high as they were to start with? It's a, it's a challenge that all incumbents face. Usually that's, that's why corporate incumbents are less likely often to be the winning proposer unless they have some sort of massive amount of infrastructure, like they own the local landfill that's used. This is a unique case where the, the city has the landfill. So again, we, we went over every jot and tittle and feel that the company we're recommending meets all the requirements at the best value. However, again, this is not a bid and you have other factors. You have the experience that you've had. So there's, certainly we, we serve at, at your pleasure and I'm happy to answer more questions.
Well, your answers are very forthright and frank, so don't, don't worry about that. I mean, I'm glad, we're glad to have you on board to navigate us through this because you've been through a lot more than we have. So, John?
Thank you. I just want to make clear in my own mind and for anybody here or listening, that 4% factor you're talking about waste management, is your benchmark not in relationship to the other proposers?
Yes, sir. Yes, that, that is correct.
All right, any other questions? We ready for some public comment? Anybody, y'all ready out there? Anybody want to wade into the waters? Into the trash?
I was going to say, add to the trash.
Anybody? It's okay, don't worry about it if you want, if you want things to say. And I've got a letter up here from, I think we all have a letter from CNS, which I guarantee we've read. Anybody else want to weigh in? Come on up. Ms. Fisher. I have a conflict I have to declare. I've known Ms. Fisher for probably longer than you've been alive. And you always look like you're getting younger, man, for 30 years, so go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Supervisors and staff, for the record, Susan Fisher with McDonnell Carano. And we really appreciate representing here CNS Waste and John Shea, President and CEO of CNS. And we appreciate the opportunity to, to be here before you today and also to present CNS's credentials. And as you can see from, from our submittal, your consultants did have their work cut out for them. There are a couple of points that we do want to hit on and I'll certainly let John take over because he has been involved in this industry his entire life, not most of his life, but his entire life. But a couple of the things that, that I want to hit on that I saw and heard personally in sitting through all of the public scoping meetings, the stakeholder meetings, two things stood out over and over and over again, and it was the customer service and it was weekly recycling. And we have proposed weekly recycling. Our, our residential rate came out 40 cents over what waste management's is for, for the residential customers, 40 cents per month. So under five bucks a year to have weekly recycling. The other thing is there's been reference today to a call center. We don't do call centers. We have an office in each community that we serve. We have staff in each community. We have a general manager in each community that we serve. We have employees who live and work in that community and they're members of the, the community. They are encouraged to engage in the community. The community engagement and giving back to the communities that they serve is just part of our corporate culture. It's not something that we do because we're mandated to do it. We have the office and we have the people and the staff. And something else that I think is very unique about CNS Waste, in addition to being so involved in the communities they serve, is that the people in the office who are answering the phone calls and taking complaints, if there are any complaints, they go out and they ride the trucks with the drivers so that they understand what the landscape looks like, they understand what sort of things might trigger a phone call if something doesn't get picked up for some reason. So they really understand so that they can explain to the people and then they, they get that corrected. The person doesn't have whoever's called because something didn't get picked up, they don't have to wait another week. It gets picked up the next day if they can get it remedied then. So there are a lot of things that they do just as part of their own corporate culture to make sure that their, their customers are, feel like they're part of the CNS family. And so with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Shea.
Thank you, thank you, Susan. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. My name again is John Shea, I'm representing CNS Waste Solutions. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity to participate in the, in the city's RFP process and to speak to you today regarding the staff report and the evaluator's recommendations. I'd like to thank your consultant, Sloan Vasquez McAfee in particular, Carissa, for all the work and effort put in throughout this process and also for acknowledging the qualifications of our company as reflected in the high ranking we received. Their statements include CNS's proposal was comprehensive, high quality, and tailored to the input of the community stakeholders and supervisor direction. CNS's performance record, financial capabilities, and jurisdiction satisfaction are outstanding. CNS would deliver excellent customer service with a focus on diversion, public education, and customer service. Examples of our electronic and print public education materials were also outstanding. CNS's proposed collection service programs would provide optimal service for the city. In the end, although we submitted an excellent proposal that achieved the city's RFP goals, the evaluators could out-recommend us primarily because of our commercial rates, that they were, that they were higher than the dramatically reduced rates proposed by waste management. And there's mention of the incremental cost to the residential customers. So since that's been brought up today, let me just touch on that for a second. The incremental cost, the 1795 for the additional garbage cart, that part is strategic. Our goal is to increase diversion, increase participation in the recycling and diversion programs. And so if we can create a disincentive for people to go and get another garbage cart, we will do that. Our goal is to drive them to the additional recycle cart that comes at no charge or the additional green waste cart. So our goal is to not increase revenue through additional trash service, is to push people away from the trash service to participate in the recycling green waste programs. The other piece I'd like to touch on is just there's been some comparisons with regard to the commercial, the commercial rates. And one thing I think that's important to point out is that the first year revenue is based on current service levels. And what we've found is when you introduce a comprehensive commercial recycling program, there's a migration of service levels. So I guess for ease of the discussion, just assume you generate four yards of trash a week right now. Well, you're not going to continue to have a four yard container for trash service and then add on another bin. If you generate in whole four yards, you're probably going to end up with, say, a three yard and a one yard or a two yard for trash and a two yard for recycling. So I know that you have to use those numbers to create comparisons in this process, but it's important to know that, that those are not real numbers when you start service with new programs. Because there is a migration, people will reduce the size of their waste bin and incorporate a recycling container. I also want to point out that our rates across the board represent a rate reduction from the current rate level. So a lot of the comparison has been between our rates and waste management's proposed rates, but our residential rates on average are approximately 13.5% lower than the current rates and our commercial rates have been reduced by approximately 11%. Furthermore, we're the only company to produce, or propose weekly collection, and this has been mentioned numerous times today, but for all three materials, garbage, recycling, and green waste. That's 52 combined collections per year of additional collections for recycling and green waste. I know there's, there's talk about whether or not it's more beneficial to stick with weekly or bi-weekly based on the RFP, but in the meetings that we attended in April and May, it was mentioned on more than one occasion that the weekly collection of those materials would potentially increase the rates. I heard, I think, in the board discussion, as much as doubles. There was the word that it would double the rates. That's just not true. So we, we were really creative in trying to find a way that we could offer weekly recycling and still reduce the rates from their current level. As mentioned, these, combining these services on the same day offers an ultimate arrangement in terms of maximizing participation, customer convenience, needs of use. There are no calendars to consult, no phone calls necessary, you know, to determine which day. You don't have to go out, look to see what your neighbors are doing. It's automatic.
That's right.
You know, yeah. And at the same time, when we were putting this together, we're mindful of the, of the conditions of your roads. I mean, I know there's an additional fee to, to, to assist in maintaining your roads. And so we were the, we, we opted to use split body collection vehicles and we use those in, in many of the communities we service. And they're able to make two collections, two separate collections at each stop. So every, every pass, we can pick up two instead of one, ultimately reducing the amount of trips on your roads, but still allowing us to offer the weekly collection. Lastly, and I think this is very important, and I have not heard much of this today, there is really no category or score to quantify what our company brings to the community. We have a long history of being true partners. We contribute to every community we serve. Our priority has always been to give back. It's how we're raised and it's how we operate our business. Last year, we contributed over $100,000 company-wide with $30,000 going to 45 different entities in Perump and Nye County alone. We're not obligated to do this. Our franchise agreements don't have language in there obligating us to contribute or mandating how we provide customer service. We're not held to the standard by, by an obligation of a contract or contract language. It's how we operate. It's who we are. It's because of our commitment to the communities we serve, not to Wall Street, not to shareholders. We have never had a contract go out to bid or through an RFP process because we never wait. We don't wait till the end of the contract to sit down with you and talk about changes of the industry, changes in the recycling market, new innovations in collection technology. We are, we are working hand in hand on a daily basis with the communities we serve. So you don't have to wait 15 years for us to come back in and have that discussion. You know, we are entrusted. I'm, I'm just shocked for, you know, for waste management to operate with presumably a 40% profit margin for years, maybe decades, and then to, and then to take the CPI increase as they did six months ago, it just goes to show how different, how different we are as businesses. In the communities that we service, we're entrusted with surcharges for fuel price fluctuations. It's something that we've worked out with our communities to battle some of these, you know, ongoing dramatic changes in fuel. And we've actually created a reputation over the years for lowering our rates when fuel prices drop, not because we're asked to, but because we feel it's our obligation as a service provider. So today you have an opportunity to forge a new path for Carson City. You're responsible for making a 15-year commitment to a partnership that serves the best interests now and in the future. This partnership goes well beyond rates. It should include a local office, not just a call center. And again, because it's the right thing to do, if you're going to be part of the community, you have to have a presence in the community. We also incorporate, there's been some discussion about after hours or late, we, we use technology to help facilitate that. We've got specific apps that you can download on your phone, that you can get information, real-time information about services, questions. We respond immediately through social media. So we have, you know, really office technology and office capabilities around the clock, not just the physical presence. But that's one piece. And we base that on the communities we serve. In Perump, Perump has a high senior population. We have two receptionists because so many people want to come into our office and pay their bill by hand. We're not obligated to do that, but we do that and they want to come in, they talk, they discuss, it's a first-name basis, but we do. We have, we've, we've created an environment where we have two receptionists there because that's what the community is made up of. So, so yes, you need to have the local office, you need to have owners that you can contact 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I have, my cell number, you will all have that. You'll all be able to get ahold of me, just like every other community that we work in. If there's an issue, I take calls, I mean, it's, that's how we, we work. For 20 years, some of the same people I've worked with called me on a regular basis for anything. And you need, you need a community that will give back and not just take, and a company that can evolve and grow with the community and the industry alike, and a company that U.S. Carson City will be proud to partner with. I believe that company is us and I hope that you will take these statements into consideration when making your decision. And we respectfully ask that you engage our community, or our, our company in further negotiations for the final contract. So thank you very much.
Go, a couple, a couple of things up here. Let me just say, that was one of the better arguments I've heard.
Okay.
I mean, well, well spoken, John.
Thank you.
Well spoken. I don't know who was first here. Who wants to go?
I'll go, okay. So, John, I have a question. In the commercial arena, you mentioned that, you know, potentially the revenue isn't really what it is because they're going to change the yardage that they do because of recycling. But one of my questions is, when I drive around town and look at, for instance, apartment buildings and maybe the Carson Mall, all these places that, Starbucks, I don't even see that they have room to put another yardage. So is that, is it that you don't get that great a percentage for the recycling for commercial because they don't even have space to put a two yard in a two yard? That they're not really going to be able to accommodate it? Do you see a lower percentage in the commercial actually recycling because of space constraints? Or do they take one of the, I think I saw a 96 bin, so do they just take a 96 bin?
Sorry. Okay, yeah, we would, we would look at that on a case-by-case basis. That's something that you deal with when you have a community that's developed with, you know, one bin size for waste and then to evolve to having multiple containers. It's something that, you know, down the road, planning has to start factoring in larger enclosures. But I think we've always found a way to accommodate it. It's a case-by-case basis. We'll meet with every business, we'll look at needs, space, and, you know, we'll work to some resolution that works for both, for both parties. So it might be a cart, it might be two bins, it's just something we'd have to get, get out there, sit down with the customers and, and work through a resolution.
John, I appreciate your coming forward and speaking and I'm torn here and the savings to the roads is money in our pocket. That's, that's a big deal. And the philosophy to reduce waste is also a big deal, so that matters to me. But having a commercial business, how do I sell the fact that, okay, your commercial rates are slightly higher? How do I sell that factor?
I think you look at the potential for reducing the container size that they have and adding the new enhanced services. So adding green waste service, adding recycling service and saying that, yes, you have a three yard bin now. three yard bin now, but maybe that becomes a one yard bin. If you're, if you actively participate in the programs, we will come out and train you, we'll provide educational materials, we'll show you how to do it. And if we give you, you know, if you give us a chance to do it and you, and you embrace these new programs, then you'll be able to reduce your rates because you'll have much less in the form of waste. You may go from a three yard to a 96 gallon cart because you're able to, you know, break down the cardboard, use, you know, use the other services that we're, we're adding. So I think it's not something you can look at across the board and, and say that they're going to be higher because we're going with the fixed size. They're going to have the opportunity to reduce the size because we're adding, we're adding these other services.
I think we're all on the same page here. The questions, I'll attack them from a different level. I'm, I'm quite confident that you're trying not to get too far into the weeds regarding quantifying this because that would be very difficult. But what you are saying to me is that just going rate to rate based on past doesn't make any sense for the future if there are changes. In other communities, have you seen these changes? And you, can you at least give a ballpark estimate to us of how much you think? Because we're talking a million and a half bucks here to our commercial community. So is there a percentage that you think you'd be lower, or is there not?
I'd be just guessing at this time. I mean, I'm talking conceptually, but we've...
I don't think, Dan? I think we've got to be careful about negotiating with public here, so...
It's hard to say, but, I mean, it's substantial. You know, I mean, we've got inventory of, like, larger carts. In some of our communities, we have, you know, multiple sized carts for residential. And I can tell you that we have, you know, containers, rooms full of larger carts because the people that had 96 gallon carts when they started are now using 64s and 32s. Yeah, I, I mean, there's, there's a large percentage of migration. I, I don't know, I could speak to that right now, but there, it's substantial, and that's something that, you know, we factor in when we're, when we're bidding this.
That's, that's plenty because two lawyers have now flagged me in a different way.
Okay.
And not being a lawyer, I try to listen to them. I'm not very good at it, but I try. Give me a little, and there's some of the background in here, but give us, give our public a little bit about your footprint. You've already mentioned that you're not a publicly traded company, as I understand it, and tell me about yourself.
So I'm, I'm a fourth-generation operator in the solid waste industry. My great-grandfather was one of the founding members of what is now Recology in San Francisco. My grandfather worked in the industry, my uncle, my father, and so I grew up working in, in this business in Northern California, so through high school and college, and have, you know, immediately out of school, went to work in a transition in San Jose, California for green waste, or Green Team. And my partner and I have, we've known each other for our entire lives. His family was in the, in the waste industry. I went to work with their family, and in 1997, my partner and I started our own firm, went on our own. We went to Mammoth Lakes, ended up in Promp, Nevada, and have continued to grow that business since then. So we have our Nevada operations, we have operations in northeastern California and Lassen County, and some operations on the coast in Mendocino and Lake County.
Thank you.
Were you, were you taking care of San Jose about seven years ago?
Not seven years ago.
Okay. I went down to the, I visited the San Jose MRF down there and their process, so I just wondered if that, can't remember who that was, it was Zero...
Zero Waste?
Zero Waste.
Yeah. Those were some mentors, those were, the guys that founded that were the original owners of Green Team who, you know, were mentors of, of mine that I started with in the industry.
All right. Any other questions of Susan or John? Anybody?
All right. Thank you again.
Didn't make any easy ones. Thanks. Okay. Have to think. Oh, I have to disclose here, too, I've known Ms. Przynski for probably longer than Ms. Fisher, so...
Me as well.
You as well, everybody. All right, Mary.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, and members of the board. For the record, I'm Mary Przynski. I work here with Foster Consulting. We've had the pleasure of working with Recology Waste Management Company, and I want to thank you for the compliments on the nice proposal that they put together, very thorough, very professional. And that is what this company is, very thorough, very professional. And Dan Shea, the general manager with me today, is going to talk a little bit about it. Recology is a very interesting company, a little bit different. They're 100% employee-owned, and so it's in their very best interest to do the very best job. They're very community-minded, and I think with Recology, you're not just getting a garbage company, you're getting a community partner. And Dan's going to talk just a little more about that today. Thank you.
Dan?
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Well, before I start, two things. One, I'm not related to John Shea.
You don't know that.
Well, yeah, it might be. But secondly, I'd just like to note that these pictures are really cool, and they bring back a lot of memories for me. I was stationed as a young naval officer in Asia with Carrie Arrowing Five, and it's really incredible to have them here, and it's, I, I was so focused on what I was going to say today. I'm glad you had her come up first because I didn't notice them until she said it. And so I thank you for having her up first.
Well, I was a Westpac destroyer guy, so...
I was a 1310, sir.
All right. Surface warfare guy. All right, go.
But, and thank you, esteemed members of the board and members of the community. Thank you for having us here today. I am Dan Shea. I'm representing Recology. I'm a general manager. And, you know, and I'd just like a chance today to talk about Recology and why I think we can be a very special partner to this community and what our RFP represents, and what we found to be a really important part of that RFP was, was your focus on, A, the local support, the community engagement, and the quality and cost of service. And those are, as we move forward in this very challenging environment in our country and cost of effect, those are all really, really important things as you engage in a 15-year contract with somebody. And, you know, and Recology truly is a very unique entity. I mean, you know, it is really a unique situation to have the guy who owns the company sitting in the truck while answering the phone and trying to solve your problem. We are truly a local company that solves, solves problems locally and keeps the money locally. I mean, we are not living quarter to quarter to Wall Street. We make our decisions based on what is best for the communities we serve. Our managers are not allocated. Our customer service representatives are not at a call center, they are located locally. Our proposal was a proposal that included all-new equipment, a local service center here in town with customer service reps, a customer service manager, and a general manager, all dedicated to this community. And what they were going to bring to this community is that very special relationship that we have with communities through our employee ownership. And I say it's special because it drives everything that we do as a company. And I'm going to talk to you about the, the engagement we have in communities. I personally sit on the board of the Chamber of Commerce, the Rotary, the Boys and Girls Club. Everybody in the communities I serve, they, they know me. And I'm not talking about the board members in the medias of the city, I'm talking about the people in the community. My cell phone number is on the website. Any person can call me at any time if you have direct access to me if they have concerns. That is the level of engagement. Every year, we're at the, we're at all of the fairs, we're buying the local kids pigs, we're putting on cookouts and participating in parades and cooking out for the community with those pigs that we just bought because that's how we stay connected and find out what's important to the people that we're serving.
Przynski must have told you about my pig.
Oh!
Mr. Mayor, I was very quiet about your pig. That was ostracized from town.
So just for the record, don't let, don't let the Irish name fool you. I'm half-Italian, I love my Italian sausages. So, but honestly, but we are, we're engaged on, on multiple levels and multiple facets in every single community. We don't just give back cash, we give back our heart and soul. We part, we, we participate in cleanups of schools, we paint schools, we donate mulch, we donate playgrounds, and we don't hire people to do it. Our employees show up themselves and do it. And I'm not just talking about the drivers and myself, I'm talking about the CEO, the CFO, the COO, every single person. We just recently had one in Petaluma County where I was standing, standing as the CEO cleaning up a park. We clean up, we clean up riverbeds, we donate materials. We don't have, we don't have to have it written into a contract, it's who we are. The things that you've been asking about today, they're standard operating procedure at Recology. I don't need a contract to want to do that. I do it because I live in my community, I serve my community, and we make our decisions with the community. And it is a huge part of what we, of what we are and what we're selling. And like I said, I, you know, I'd like to point out that our, our bid was currently lower than your current rates, but like I said, it included a lot. And you talked about going above and beyond what was in the RFP for service. I would say the dedicated customer service manager, the dedicated general manager, the reps, the center in here in town with people to speak to, that's what you're talking about by going above and beyond. And to mention, it's all new equipment. We didn't bid this with used or depreciated equipment, it's brand-new equipment for the community. Right? And that probably, that, that kept our rates up because we are coming in with new equipment. You know, and so we're here because, and here's my promise to you, you select, you select Recology, you won't be sorry. Because here's what I, I want to be here in this community with Recology, the employee owners want to be here. And what I want out of this is, once we deliver on this and so much more, I want you to tell all your friends and neighbors in Nevada that we delivered on so much more because I want their business too. Because she's right, I want a foothold here in Nevada because I have something to prove to all of you that there is a better way of doing business that is not driven by quarter-to-quarter profits. And you know what? It may cost a little bit more upfront to get us in the door, but I promise you, 15 years down the road, every one of your neighbors is going to shake your hand and go, thank God you brought us in. And if there's any doubt in your mind that I mean what I say, I would, I'd be happy to give you the number of every single city council member, mayor, or even resident that I serve. Because without a doubt, you can call them, and they're going to tell you that Recology and Dan Shea live up to every word that they're saying. And I just leave you with this, I ask you, if you're truly looking for a partner, one that you're not going to have to negotiate with, one that's not going to have to sharpen a pencil, but one who's going to be here with you every day, Recology is the company you want. We're not just simply going to pick your garbage up and live by a contract. We're going to be part of your family right here in Carson City, and I, and I encourage you to really strongly consider what I'm saying here today because I promise you, we'll deliver.
Were you associated with the company about seven years ago, too? Were you there?
So, sir, I, I, after I retired from the Navy, I actually, I began the business of waste management in Boston, Massachusetts. And, and I got to tell you that Recology brought me out here from Boston, and every day I go to work, and I really enjoy the people that I work with and what we're bringing to communities around here. It is truly something special, and I believe in what I'm selling.
No, I only, I raise that just because I think, and I don't know, you were here?
I was with you.
You were with, yeah. Darren and I flew to San Jose to look at Zero Waste, and then I think we actually did some negotiations with Recology to see, you know, if we could do some, a MRF up here, I think. And, you know, it turned out that the volume wasn't sufficient to do that kind of investment. This is how I understood it anyway, that at the end of the day, the volume wasn't there. But, you know, we were a good negotiating partner, that's the reason I raised that. I don't know if you were there or not, but I know Recology came in and we tried to make that work, so.
No, I was not part of that, sir. I've only been in the area for just under two years. But I would also like to note that you guys had brought up about rates and charges and things like that. I can tell you that one of the things I've done in my community is just to bring up a point because you asked about commercial value and how you sell it. You know, the, the city manager at, in Chico, California, would tell you that I came to him with a proposal on how to offer benefit to commercial services in the city of Chico through an OCC program, and I discounted it 60% from the, from the garbage. Instead of forcing everybody into mixed recycle because I recognize that at least 60% of our businesses weren't generating mixed stream, they were generating cardboard, so I returned that value, even though it wasn't in my contract and I could charge more, I went to them and said, here's a program that we can bring to the community, it's going to return value to our commercial customers and, and drive change. So like I said, with a, with a company like Recology, you're not going to have to wait 15 years. I'm going to be coming to you trying to innovate ahead of the curve. And, and like I said, Mark Orme is the city manager, and he will conform, confirm to you that we did bring that forward on our own. And that, and that's, to your question is, that is how you deliver value, is you constantly innovate, you find ways, and we do offer waste zero specialist services, which is a free service. I have one on every staff. She goes around town and she's written, I think, 200 proposals in the last year to businesses that significantly reduce their costs by aligning their services, by getting their garbage reduced, and getting them involved in those other programs. So it does work, and that service is included in our pricing.
Very good. John, supervisor.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it sounds to me like you're taking a stab at saying the same thing about the high commercial rates that your predecessor did here. Not the same thing, but similarly, that your rates as they come forward don't reflect what will be in the future necessarily?
So, yes, I concur with his comments, and I, and I am making a similar thing, but I guess what I would also note is, is that the rate you see from us, because of our, who we are and what we believe in, that is a very transparent rate. There is no hidden ancillary fees that are not apparent in that, which is a very standard thing that happens, overage charges, contamination charges and other stuff. Our fees are fee. And so I just want to be very clear about that. That fee is very transparent, we're not hiding anything, there are no ancillary fees in there. But yes, I concur with his, with his statement.
Maybe I can follow up on that a little. In our RFP, every, didn't they have to bid so, pretend so-and-so customer X puts too much stuff that doesn't belong in the bin? Do they get to charge them excess rates? And isn't that consistent across?
There's a number of different approaches. They have the opportunity to tag it, to, to not provide service, and to give them the opportunity to remedy it. They have the opportunity to go in and tell the customer. I mean, there's, there's a number of different ways that, that they can handle that, so it's in the...
Maybe I can follow up...
No, there's, there's overage language in the contract as far as, we don't, we don't require if a, if a company has bags of trash all lined up outside their dumpster and overage. We aren't asking, and it's actually not industry practice, to have a service provider go in and be expected to pick up all that overage. That's, that's not accurate. There's remedies to address that.
You would upsize them to the next yardage.
Yes, they could do that, or that would be left, and they would have to, right, upsize their service, et cetera. So you don't want to have overages because that's, it's, it's just not good. It's not good for the city, it's, it's, it brings in vermin. It's, it's, it's not good. So, but the contract addresses overages.
But was that consistent? I guess what I'm looking for is, I just want to make sure that we didn't have someone low-bid the commercial because of another section in the contract...
Sure.
That they're going to make up that million five because they're going to do it different than the other two bidders. Again, I just want to make sure we didn't embed something into the process that honestly, maybe the other bidder outsmarted them. You know, I don't know. I just want to make sure.
All the proposers, including Recology and including CNS, addressed overages, and that's, that's, that's a standard piece. Now, they had different strategies, but that was, that, that was a piece of what they said they would or would not do as far as, did the cardboard need to be bundled? Would they limit overages to cardboard versus whatever? So, and we certainly can ensure that, that the city is pleased with whatever the, the final contract is, looking at those, those exceptions.
I guess that's actually important to me because I know it's like having a homeowners association, and so if they're aggressive and the guy leaves his trash out, he gets a $25 fine versus this homeowners association that somebody threw a rock through their window. So I think that those are where we're going to get a whole bunch of complaints, and I want to make sure that we don't have unintended consequences for something that we implemented, and then we honestly have to look at our residents and go, sorry, didn't realize you were going to get these $25 tickets, or whatever.
You know, we've, we've seen that. We actually had a city where lower rates were proposed, but the proposer said that they would only pick up 60 pounds in a 96 gallon cart, or you could only do X, and then there'd be a charge if it was over X. You'd have to have two carts, and the two carts had the same volume as one cart, but it was twice the, the, the charge. We review all of that very carefully. Now... Now, that's why this is a proposal process versus a bid process. Everyone has different approaches. But we sit down with whomever you direct us to negotiate with and we ensure that there's not an impact to the value offered to the customer and that there's, that anything that is included is industry standard and that the city agrees to it. That is, it is transparent.
Karen, John.
I have a question related to that, related to you. So, with all of this, how many are going to have actually a local office versus a call center?
They all proposed a local office. It's, it's not as if it's a, a closed building where the phone rings and you can't go and visit. Everyone proposed an office where people could come in, they can pay their bills, they, they can call, they can discuss with someone. Everyone had to provide a liaison who worked directly with, to resolve customer issues. And then, the reality is with hauling contracts, the, usually, a lot of the employees are local because they're here from, you know, they're working from four in the morning till, till, you know, another 12, 14 hours later. They're here on Saturdays. They're, they're part of the community. So, it's, that's a standard piece, is you have local folks. Now, there are other differences, but, but everyone did, was required to have a local office.
Is it walk-in?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You and, and your predecessor have both tried to distinguish yourself from waste management in relationship to there being a publicly traded corporation and you being more this, that, and the other thing. You have stressed the fact that you are an employee-owned company. Can you enlighten me as to how that is set up? You've been lured here, obviously, in the last couple of years. And are these people with stock ownership and voting rights? Or people who are enjoying the fruits of a profit-sharing program that includes ownership but not voting rights?
So you are correct. I, I was lured here as part of that thing and, and it's a, and so, yes, they share in the profits and get stock in the company. And I think what distinguishes us is, they're not just invested in Recology. That's why I said, they are, they are invested in their communities because it is their company. Our profits are put into a, an employee ownership fund. And then they are distributed to the employees in the shares in the form of stock that grows and appreciates over time. And that's, those shares are given out every year. It's, I believe it's, it's in December. And, and then when you retire, it is paid out over a five-year period. It's very similar to the old UPS setup prior to them becoming a publicly traded company. But it does, it does really instill a very different mindset in your employees about taking care of customers and communities because they all feel like employee owners. And we foster that culture because it, like I said, they're invested. It's different. They're working for themselves.
Part of my question I didn't hear the answer on was, is it too dear to, are, are the all owners with a say in the company that has to do with voting rights on their stock?
So there's no necessarily voting. You know, there is no voting because it's a, it's an employee-owned fund. We have a board of directors.
Is it, is it privately owned company, though?
Yeah, it's private.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of Mary or John, or Dan, rather, excuse me?
No, just thank you for the opportunity to be here and I sincerely hope that I get to see a lot more of everybody.
Well, I guess, you know, I was going to ask, you know, before we close out today, however it comes out here, the negotiation process should be pretty smooth because whoever you negotiate first knows that coming up, there's some pretty responsible people right behind them if they don't make the cut.
The fact is, you had such a competitive process. Well, two reasons. One, you involved the community from the beginning and had all that great input to shape the RFP. But then you had phenomenal companies participating. And they all saw each other at the pre-proposal conference and knew that, that they better step up their game because they're very reputable companies.
Actually, something occurred to me to address Mr. Barrett's question about the employee ownership, about if the drivers and the customer service reps have a say. No, it's true, we don't vote. But recently, and I still am, part of the board of directors in corporate suites, strategic planning team to develop the five-year strategic plan. And it's interesting how they set it up. There's a various amount of teams, but on that strategic planning team, the drivers, customer service reps are all represented on that team in developing the plan. So, yes, they have a voice in how this company is run and managed, a very strong voice. You know, and as an employee owner, I feel like my voice is heard all the way up to Mike Sanjakamore, CEO. And I'll just share this on a personal level. After I walked out of my interview with Recology, and, and I mean, it was an interview, I, I spent all day with every single member of the C-suite. And I had called the executive recruiter who hooked me up with them. I said, "You've got to be kidding me. I have six interviews with everybody from the head of human resources to the CEO at four o'clock." I mean, my God, what kind of job am I applying for? By the time I left at five o'clock, I called her back and I said, "Diane, oh my God, do what you've got to do. Get me a job at this company. Whatever it takes." And what amazed me is, is that Mike Sanjakamo, Mark Lamelli, I saw them for the first time at a community cleanup that I volunteered for my first few months. They remembered every single personal detail about me. And it was amazing. I'd only met them the once. So, when I tell you that they, and they show up at my site for the employee ownership meeting, the first thing Mike does is ask drivers about their kids' pictures. He knows every detail about them. So, yes, they have a voice all the way to the top.
Thank you for that. That's actually important and I have my reasons for wondering.
All right. Thank you. All right. Very good. All right. Who else wants to speak? Because if, if there's a couple of them, we're going to take a break and then we'll come back. We've been going about a couple hours. Ernie, come on up. Mr. Martinelli. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Don't you for a long time, too.
Yes.
I'm so good. Yeah, okay.
I, I didn't know about your pig, but supervisors, Greg Martinelli, on behalf of Waste Management and Capital Sanitation, I brought with me today David Stratton. He's our area controller. And his, his presence will be fortuitous since many of you had questions about financial matters. And so Dave can kind of enlighten you as to that. Certainly, when you're, when you're the incumbent and a public company has been referenced here, there's a lot of, a lot of opportunity for things to be highlighted that are, that are maybe not as efficient as they should be. And certainly, that's occurred here. But I, I think unless, unless I'm, I'm reading the dais wrong, most of the time, if you're getting complaints about us, it's because there's, there's an issue, certainly. But you're not getting it from the 20,000 customers that we service in, in Carson City. And I think that's evident by the, by the survey that was done and, and most of the folks were happy with the service that was being provided. I think the, the, our response to the RFP that was put together, it, it really gave us an opportunity to see what, what the community needs were. We obviously listened to each of you. You were, you were crystal clear on what it is that you wanted. I don't know how many times at the pre-proposer meeting, Carissa used the term "value" in talking about a lot of different things. So, there was no question that the expectation from the city was that they wanted the rates to be reduced. That, that was crystal clear. What often happens in a long-term agreement like this one, 20 years, 20-plus years, is, you know, we never came and asked for a extraordinary rate increase. This was all a, a product of what the CPI was, whether it was, you know, 1%, it was negative, it was 3%, whatever it was. And over a period of time, obviously, the rates, the rates continued to grow. So, I think that's where you get to the point where you're able to, you're able to show a, a cost reduction. And as a public company, you know, there's, there's negatives that have been talked about at public company. But there's also some value in, in doing business with multinational corporations. I mean, our buying power for trucks, carts, other, other equipment necessary in the business is, is substantial. And that's what gives us the opportunity to come in and provide you with a rate structure that we have. Now, the other thing that has not been mentioned, and I, it's clear from the questions you folks have asked, that you haven't read every single page of these 200-plus-page documents from five different parties. But the, okay. Well, anyway, they're, they were substantial. I mean, ours wasn't quite as big as Shea's, but it was, you know, three-quarters of that size, yeah. So, so they end up being, they've ended up being a lot of material. And so we, we went through it and we, we've looked at all these options. I mean, we've looked at split, split-body trucks. We looked at the, at the, at the weekly recycling. The advantage that you have when you're an incumbent, we know the city. We know the volumes. The recycling volumes here are not substantial. Now, we hope that changes with the, with the reduction for the commercial users, that more folks will participate on a commercial basis. And what we have found in other jurisdictions is when you eliminate those baskets that have been here since 1991, all of a sudden, people find it easier to participate and they're, it's not as cumbersome to wheel their cart out to the curb every other week. So, we were, we were able to look at those type of things and we were able to provide a, a quality product that met all of the, all of the requirements of the RFP and, and beyond. So we've not only got a district manager that operates here, we've also committed to an outreach coordinator to deal with your commercial customers where, where you've asked about, you know, "How do we deal with my needs?" And, you know, "I'm familiar with where your restaurant is." You know, you're going to, you're going to have to give up a parking place if we try to stick another container in there. So how do we deal with that? Can we, can we downsize your service and provide you with two, three yarders? And does that accomplish one for, one for your garbage and one, one for your recyclables? You know, there's, there's all sorts of avenues. But we committed that, that person and that's what that person's going to do, is going to work with the multifamily communities and the individual businesses in order to provide them with that recycling. Because clearly, that's something that the board wanted, was to see an increase in commercial recycling. So, we used all of that information, that local information, to come up with a, with what we feel is a quality package that we provided to the city. And, you know, I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Well, one of the people who complained to me was her husband. And the complaint was, you know, "I keep calling them. I got stacking up out here, you know? We've got all kinds of things going on. I keep stacking up. I can't get anybody to come to pick it up." You know, so that's kind of, you know, that hurts. But I just give you that. Let me ask a question, Ernie. Maybe if it's not appropriate to talk about, you'd let me know. But there was, what happened in Reno? We had, you entered into a contract in Reno and then there was some, is there something going on over there now in, in Reno with respect to the award of the contract or the service delivery or something like that? It was in the Reno paper, so. If it's not appropriate, you'd let me know.
Well, is there something going on?
Yeah.
The short answer is yes. We've been engaged in litigation almost since the inception of the agreement. It occurred at the, right after the existing county, city council, the new city council was seated. And the new city council doesn't like the agreement that the old city council entered into. And so consequently, they've created an, an environment that allows other companies to infringe upon the franchise. And that's what's created the, the legal, the legal issues that are, that are pending. Now, we've been, we've been in front of a district court judge. He ruled that the, the contract is clear and unambiguous. There's been several findings by the city's internal judicial process that the, these poaching haulers are in fact violating the franchise. But it's a political issue and the, the politicians are not in a position where they want to take a stand. And it's creating a significant, a financial burden. So.
Okay, I got you. All right, thank you. Thanks for letting me go down that road. Somebody's going to ask that question anyways. All right.
My question is about equipment. I know we have a list of vehicles, but that means nothing, quite frankly. So, in terms of the types of vehicles, are you going to be using the same vehicles that you currently have? Are you going to switch that up in terms of wear and tear on our roads, which is a big deal?
No. The requirement was we, we, we purchase all-new trucks and all-new carts. So that's the way we bid the project.
And those, will they collect recycle and regular waste at the same time? How's, how's that going to work? Are you, you're not really going to reduce the number of trips on our roads, correct or not?
No.
No.
There'll be two passes, there'll be two passes a week through a neighborhood.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Martinelli? John, anything?
Yeah, I'd like the Waste Management representative to weigh in on the general subjective terminologies that have been brought here regarding sharpened pencils and what I have interpreted as vying for market share, although I don't know why Waste Management would need to vie for market share.
Sure. David Stratton, I'm the finance director for the area and for Waste Management Nevada. I've been doing this about 20 years. I, I really understand our business. Brett Hanson, our district manager, really understands the operation here. And we spend a lot of time going through all of our costs and determining where we needed to improve. And we challenged Brett, and Brett challenged his drivers on becoming more efficient. And quite frankly, there are aspects of this agreement that allow us to become more efficient. When you containerize recycling, we don't have the drivers getting out of the trucks. That helps. There's an opportunity to have more customers where there's an opt-out ability, but by and large, it's mandatory service now. That really helps. So, you spread now your cost structure over more customers. So that was part of it. You know, this contract, our, our bid stands on its own. We're not looking at this contract in reference to anything else we have in northern Nevada, California, Oklahoma, or anywhere else. It's, it's by itself. And I did want to address the commercial revenue. You're right. If you have more recycling, you will bring your revenue base down. But if you're starting at a lower base to begin with, it's all going to be less. So, we fully anticipate more recycling participation. But participation or not, it definitely will be cheaper for the customers to recycle with us based on the rate structure. There's no, there's no arguing the math on that.
So maybe my question is, is to really get to, you put a proposal together to have an office, but I'm looking for what your commitment is for the customer service. So even though you tell me, "Well, overall, the people are happy." Well, I, I don't think so. When I get 17% in complaints, do you know what it is to take someone to do a complaint? So if you have 17% complaining, I believe there's at least 10% more out there. So, I, I need you to assure me that your company takes customer service in Carson City seriously. I want the phone number. We want the, to be able to reach out. We want the public to get service. And so, help me with that.
The, the, the fact that you requested a, a local call center is, is actually going to be, be a benefit to our, to our operations. And, you know, we're, we're currently leasing the building on Sheep Drive from the Ballardini family. And we have an option to buy that property, which is what our intent is. And so that's, that's where the public will be able to go. So, call center is really a, really a semantic type of a word. But I mean, it's our office. I mean, that's where the drivers are at. That's where the, that's where the trucks are parked. That's where the maintenance facility is. That's where the manager's office is. And that's where the, the office will be. So there'll be folks in there who are dedicated to dealing with the public when they come in. And there'll be folks that are dedicated to dealing with the telephone. And they'll be, all be cross-trained to each, do each other's job so that in the event that once someone is not there, or it's lunchtime or whatever, that, that they're, the customer's needs can be taken care of.
Karen, would you like to go? John?
Yeah, I don't know that I understood that. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, but did you just tell me that this is going to be an advantage to your company? And if so, why didn't you do it before, knowing that Carson City residents wanted it?
Well, until, until you pushed out this RFP, we weren't aware that there, of the significant nature of the demand for it to be in the, in the local community. Because we, you know, we still have folks that actually come to our office to, to pay their bill. So they, they do use the facility. But from a telephone perspective, they, they get the, they call the Phoenix Call Center when they do. And that actually is a building as you, it's not an office. It's a building, so. so.
And, and what you seem to be telling me is you're buying all-new equipment, you're opening a call center, and you sharpened your pencil as well as to do a million and a half less on a commercial. It's just hard to compute.
It's a good problem to compute.
They're bound by it.
Bound by it. Following up on what John just said there, and again, this might be inappropriate at this juncture, and somebody will shut me off here, but are there things that in, in this, the draft contract that you've seen, are there things in there that we can anticipate will be game stoppers for you?
No. No, I mean, it's, you know, you guys could've done a lot worse, other than picking a consultant like you did. I mean, Chris has done a great job with this proposal. She's answered your questions, you know, very similar that I would answer them if you asked me the same thing. So, we, we've been very impressed with the process. It was onerous, but it was a, it was a good process. It, it allows you to look into certain things and figure out what it is you can and can't do better. And so, overall, you're not gonna see anything. There's no, there's no surprises in there from us. I mean, as Chris pointed out, I think that there were certain clarification things. I mean, I know our, some of the language that was written relative to insurance, I mean, which is something way above my head, that the insurance people had to talk about, but not, not the, not the parameters of the type of insurance that would be provided. That wasn't the question. It's just, there's certain things that are, that are written with insurance companies that they want to say something different. So, that's something that we'll have to iron out, but they're not deal breakers by any stretch of the imagination.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions, this panel? Anybody? Okay. Thank you. Ernie, are you retired now, or what'd you do?
It's Greg. Ernie's my uncle.
Greg. Greg.
No, I'm still working.
Okay. All right.
Evident by me being here.
All right. Anybody else? Because we'll take a short, come on up. Then we'll finish public comment here, we'll take a break and come back.
I'm a member of the CNS team. Is it okay if we?
Sure. Come on. Come on.
Just kind of a quick question.
Name.
Excuse me, Richard Johnson with CNS Waste Solutions.
You better spell the last.
Johnson. J-O-H-N-S-W. Um, I guess my question is this, and maybe it's a question of the consultants as well. Is there anything forbidding the board of supervisors from directing negotiations occur with the top two companies? Because it seems to me to be such a razor-thin edge, and we have a lot to offer. And some of that might be best vetted if, if two companies knew that they were going head-to-head with one another. Just a, just a question. I'll, I'll leave it with you. I don't need an answer.
Well, you know, then you get to the question of, just for grins, you get to the question of, well, where do you cut that off? You know, you can negotiate with five, I guess. I mean, it was pretty close, but, okay. All right. You don't want to answer that, do you? Dan?
I could if I wanted.
It's, that's all right. That's all right. Okay. All right. Anybody else on the, other public comment? Board, do you want to take a break before we?
Yes.
All right. We're gonna, we'll, if, if, if it moves you when you're outside, we'll have public comment when we come back. But otherwise, we'll come back and we'll make the Solomon's decision and go on. Okay? We'll be in recess for five or 10 minutes.
Okay. Solomon, sure.[827.13]
All right, we're gonna bring the meeting of the, reconvene the meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Chris, I understand that you want, before we bring it back up here for discussion purposes, do you want to weigh in on some of the things that were said?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make a quick clarification. Regardless of the hauler, all five proposers proposed two passes per week for residential. You either have one trash truck and one green waste truck going one week, then one trash truck and one recycling truck going one week, so it's two passes per week, or you have a trash and recycling bifurcated truck going once, then coming back and doing a second pass for green waste. So I just wanted to make sure that, I clarified that all companies proposed two passes on each, for each household per week. I, I got the sense that that might have not, I, I may have not spoken clearly enough on that. I also just wanted to confirm that in our evaluation, we do look at risk. That's a, that's a large component of what, what we examine because we certainly do not want to put any cities or any boards at, at risk of having a provider default on service. And in fact, in prior procurements, we have gone with second or third highest rate provider as our recommendation because of our concerns with risk. So I wanted to ensure that you knew that that was part of our evaluation and incorporated into the overall findings.
Okay. Let me ask you a question. There was a, one of the gentlemen came up at the last about negotiating with two or more, or three or four or five. What's your take on that? I mean, well, give me your take first, then let me give you kind of my thumbnail.
We typically would recommend, and in fact, our most recent procurement, we recommended negotiating with the top two for, usually there's one of two reasons. One is they're within a percentage of each other. So if we change this to percentage points, Waste Management would be at 96.1%, CNS at 93.9. There's cases where there's like a 96.1 and a 95.9. It's truly neck and neck. That would be one, one reason we would recommend that. The second reason is if, based on our pro forma and benchmark, all of the companies were 20 or 30% higher, and upon our review of all of their cost proposals, we identified opportunities for the city to enjoy greater value. And we knew that by bringing the top two back together, that we could identify to them, these areas you need to look at because we know you can do better. We know what the costs are, so take a look at that. We'd like to see you be more competitive. That's another reason that we do it. Neither of those cases are in play here, and certainly we serve at your pleasure, but that's, that's our typical rationale for recommending, and we have in the past recommended top two. We didn't in this case.
Okay. Understood. All right. Anybody else want to weigh in? Yes, sir.
Brett Hanson, Waste Management. I'm the district manager here in Carson City, and I just wanted to point out on the commercial rates. We know how hard local businesses work and how much they contribute to our community. And $1.5 million over the next 15 years is going to equate to $22 million. So I just want to point that out. And I wanted to allow Sue McGuffey, she's one of our ops specialists, to talk.
I've lived in this community for 18 years, transported from California, and I've worked for Waste Management for 14 of those years as an operations specialist. I'm here at the local office here in Carson City. I deal with the public daily with phone calls and customers coming in, and I can assure you, especially since I even have my own children and grandchildren here and in the local schools here in Carson City, that Waste Management is very much in tune with and willing to and want to service this community. That's my two cents worth, as a resident.
Always worth more than two cents. But you could answer, you know, tell me how easy or difficult it is to find on the Waste Management website what the telephone number is for your local shop and to find out when the recycling days are.
It is not at this time. However, Waste Management is committed to providing that. And if people come into the local office, they are given our phone numbers, either Jenny's or mine, at the local office, and they are given the calendars, and we go over it with them as far as recycle weeks and such go. So we do work with the community, but readily available at this point in time, not on the website. But I can promise you Waste Management, again, is committed to doing that.
And I can tell you, Mr. Mayor, that Rick Cooley has my phone number. He calls me day and night about issues, and we resolve them. You know, we don't have to, to, we already have that relationship that, that many other companies have, have talked about up here, that, you know, when, when Rick calls me, we handle that issue.
Okay. Well, I get you. That, and that's, that's very good. You know, the other, the other side of that one, it's Brett, right?
Yes.
Is that, you know, we get calls too, and when I go to the website to find out who I should call, it's kind of, I don't have enough time in the day to figure it out.
Well, and, and...
But that's what, that's why I, that's why I raise the question. That's what customer service is, and I...
Sure. And in the proposal, you know, we have a website that is dedicated to Carson City that has all of that information. We still have the local office, and on, before I leave today, I'll give you every one of my, my business cards, if you don't have it.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you very much. Thanks both of you. Welcome to Carson City. 18 years, you might as well be a native. Five years, be a native, that's it. Yeah.
Chris, I want to ask you this question, and we talked briefly in the, on the break, but, you know, I've, my gut feeling is that, that we have one company that's about picking up trash, trash hauling, and the other two are more about environmentally being conscious for the future. So I, I just need your take on that. Because obviously, when reviewing the proposals, you have some sort of an assessment in your
The presentations today, certainly the first two companies that spoke highlighted their commitment to recycling more effectively. However, in the proposals, and according to our questions and requirements for recycling, I will say that all four of the top companies, but certainly our recommended company, had a very robust program. They developed very specific materials for the city to roll out the new programs, to educate the community. Their, their new website and other communication tools would be effective. I, I believe that any of the top four companies would be a credit to your city. They, they really were very closely rated. And certainly, the feedback given during the community town halls, there was some strong feedback about the, the communication and, and other issues. The proposal did address those concerns, and the contract does obligate the remedies. So there's, because we take risk into, we factor risk in, it is our opinion that based on what is required and based on what is proposed, you would receive a different level of service. Whether that is, whether you, you choose to make a decision on that or not, that's, this is certainly your decision, and again, we had the pleasure of having phenomenal companies come, come forward and participate. But I, I have no reason to doubt that what was proposed will, will be implemented mostly because of the effort that staff put into and the legal team put into really making sure that the contract was a new, updated, robust contract that, that had requirements that, that better meet the, the city's needs.
The other question I have is that, in 15 years, there will be growth in Carson City. And in your opinion, is there, obviously, the, the company that you recommended can meet that growth? Is there any negative for the other two companies with regards to that?
No. I, I, I feel confident that, that they have the infrastructure and resources and the, the track record necessary to, to serve the city for 15 years, as no, as shown in their, their good scores.
I saw your percentages on how these things were ranked. As my colleagues know, I'm kind of a subjective guy, not so much objective, although I spent 50 years as a reporter, and I tried to be as objective as I knew how. But I look at the world through eyes that are a little more generalized, and I just, when I look at these models and ways of assessing and et cetera, and I know people put marks on pieces of paper, et cetera, I realize that they are, they're like, when I was a kid drawing, I'd get outside the lines sometimes. And, and I, I find, looking at this, that, I'm asking, I guess, how much more or less than 35% was cost, in your view, regarded in this thing? Because I do get the feeling that cost is driving this, and I do also see that it's targeted at our commercial more than it is at our residential. So it, it looks like it's equally weighted in terms of cost and service, but I'm a value guy. When I go out and buy a bottle of wine, I want, I want the lowest price I can get and the best wine. How does that measure up in your mind?
Our scoring methodology is extremely complicated.
I got that from looking at it.
And it's very, it is very objective. And within each of the categories, there's numerous criteria that are listed out in the RFP, and each of those, and with, for each of those components, we go across the board, we, we score it according to how well they responded to the RFP, and then how well they responded in comparison to each other. The numbers are put in, and they are what they are. I mean, whatever, whatever spout out by the formula, that's what it is. We, we have no idea what the number's going to be, and different members of our team work on different parts. So when it all comes together, it's, it's kind of interesting to see where everything comes out. Now, the, the cost component is very objective, obviously. However, what you have here is a case of, if you eliminated the cost, you almost have a three-way tie. I mean, you have three phenomenal companies. So then, this is where the value or the cost comes in and the reason for our recommendation. We say, you have, here, when you look at the three lowest cost proposers, you have three phenomenal companies, great track records, low risk, they met the requirements, they're contractually obligated to meet those requirements. So then, so then we look at what is the, who's offering that at the lowest value. Now, we didn't, we didn't really have a case where you had a company that scored much lower in their ability or their, their proposed programs, where they were rated lower and did poorly, and then had really low prices, so they counteracted. No, you had, you had three companies that really scored quite well across the board, and then, it's true, the differentiator does seem to be the, the cost, but it's, it's not because cost was weighted more than the others, it was weighted what it was weighted. It just ends up being, that's the one differentiator right here. You have three companies that, you know, we, we certainly, if you directed us to negotiate with any of them, we, we happily do so and do so in confidence that the end result would be a good outcome as far as services. However, we can't change what the proposed rates are. All we can do is review them for both competitiveness and reasonableness. We compare them, half of, half of the score is competitiveness, who's got the lowest rates? The other half is reasonableness, where we actually go in and we look and see, can they really do what they're saying they're going to do for this amount? Or are they charging too much for some components? And as some of the companies in this room can attest from, from going through other procurement processes with us, we've come back or even put in our recommendations, they need to lower the rate for X, or they need to look at this component for what they're charging per ton for X because it's too high, and we're going to address that if you direct us to negotiate.
One last question. I looked, I, I may have missed it, but I, and I didn't see the proposals, as Laurie was saying earlier, from each of the potential vendors, but was there a way of assessing past performance that I wasn't able to? Because they are going to be two different contracts, and you keep saying, the legal and the public works people have bound this up, so we won't have problems. But is there anything in the proposals that came in that you scored for past performance on? Of course, that might not be fair, because only one has past performance in this community.
Pardon me. There's pros and cons to being an incumbent. You have infrastructure that helps, you have past performance, that, that can be a challenge. However, there is an entire set of scoring on performance records, and we, we certainly looked at that, and we certainly factored in the feedback here, but not just here. So we, we have to look at the overall set of, of references, et cetera. So we, we look at all of that, and Waste Management, within that scoring, I can say without it causing any issues with, with further negotiations or direction, but in that component, they scored lower than the other three. But in other components within that category...
What does that mean, scored lower? Better?
They scored worse.
Worse? That's what I thought.
That one item within the category, that 15% category. But they had strengths that some of the others didn't have, so it, so the, the scores, they, they represent a holistic look, and each of the scores come together to provide an overall view of, of the company.
Thank you.
So may I clarify? You were telling us some reasons that you would negotiate potentially with two companies, and I, and I need to understand a little bit more. So when we open negotiations, if we did it with two companies, both companies get an opportunity to sharpen up anything in the proposal that would make them more viable than the other candidate. And the only advantage to doing two is they both know what the current proposal is now of the other body. So why doesn't it benefit us as the city to negotiate with two to see if we can't just get the very best deal for the residents? Why not? Why can't you, why not?
We certainly can do whatever you direct us to do, and we would put our, we would think very carefully on how to best approach it to ensure that we avoided risk for the city. You've brought up concerns about how low the rates are proposed by the, by the highest-rated company. If they were to come in with lower rates, that, that could be a challenge. Also, we'd have to really carefully look at the reasonableness of both new cost proposals to make sure that the price wasn't separate from the actual costs that are associated with providing the service by, by the company. However, you, you could direct us to ask for a best and final, you could direct us to ask for some, us to say, we'd like you to change these specific items and/or come back with what your cost would be if you were to do this. But, but again, our, our typical practice is, we negotiate with two if there's, if we find that lower rates are achievable, or if the scoring is so close that, and when we talk close, we're talking, you know, within five or six points. However, again, I, we serve at your pleasure.
Well, if you go too far down that road, you might as well negotiate with five. And, and I get concerned, but, but I get you where you're coming from, and I see where Supervisor Bagwell's coming from as well, so. Because you're, you're, in a global sense, you're right that they all responded to the RFP in terms of customer service, and then we could look at, look at the rates side of things. And, you know, it'd take an awful, if, that, that, you know, the, the rates and the, and the rate differential that's here seems like it's going to be awful difficult to overcome in a sense of negotiating with both folks, or three folks, or four, or five. So I'm, I'm not certain, I tend to agree with what your analysis is on why you don't negotiate with two or more in a situation like we have here. But what I would say is that when we go down the negotiation road, if we go down that road, on customer service issues and those, the technical issues that are there, take away the rates, is that, you know, don't necessarily just rely on a liquidated damage clause to, as a, as a enforcement mechanism. There has to be some way of saying, you know, because unless a liquidated damage clause has got a lot of damages in it, it's a cost of doing business. And, and so, you know, you want, you want some different form of, because it's, that's, that's what this community's looking at. I mean, it's customer service, no matter how we cut it. I mean, they want the rates, and what John said, you know, you want, you want the lowest rates you can get, and you want the best service you can get. Well, that's, that's exactly right. But we need to have, and which we haven't had over the past, some degree of, for lack of a better non-legal word, a hammer, in order to effectively enforce a contract that has, you know, where customer service is at issue, because it's kind of an amorphous call. Sometimes customer service, you know, there's two sides to every story, but we have to have that kind of capability in, in a contract. And so, it's all fine and good to have liquidated damages. There needs to be some mechanism where it's, you know, those liquidated damages are significant enough on even a small violation where it can, it can, you can maintain control over the contract, or you have some other method of, of dealing with that. So that's kind of where I am. And I, and I think that at, at the end of the day, you know, I didn't expect, you know, I'm surprised that it came out with this degree of difference in, in rates. I mean, and, and, you know, when you look at it, you know, the, the customer service side, even I've had troubles with the customer service side. I've had to call Arizona, and I've had complaints as well. And I guess internally, and for me, you know, okay, can I, can I handle customer service by virtue of a contract? And I think I probably could if we're very careful about it, and we're very, you know, we know that that's an issue that we need to have strong enforcement capabilities over. Is that sufficient enough to say, you know what, the rate savings and, from these contracts are sufficient to overcome any past queasiness in my stomach about whether or not the, the customer service is really going to be there? And, and, you know, I think at the end of the day, they are, and that's, that's kind of where I come down on this. I mean, but I also think that at, at the end of the day, as I mentioned earlier, you know, if you negotiate with one and you run into a roadblock, you've got two others that are there, so it's going to be difficult for someone who's even at the lowest bidder, you know, because they, they know that, you know, this isn't done until it's inked here. That's my, that's my sense of where we are in this, and, and I'm really glad we hired, hired outside counsel, not that we don't have great staff here to do those things. But in the trash business, I've learned over nine years that there are more ins and outs on trash than you can shake a stick at. I mean, there are more nuances, there are more things, you know, about how you do this, how you do that, how you charge for this, how you don't, you know, who can get in the market, who can't, you know, what, all that stuff. I'm an old, you know, an old lobbyist friend of mine, some of you may know out there, used to say, you know, if it, if it stinks, I'm in it, trash, so, you know. But, so anyway, let me just close it there. I think that despite, and not, not despite, but, you know, as we move, as we move forward, I think that the, the responsible position, at least in my mind, is, you know, move down the road with your analysis right now, see where that leads out, and go from, go from there. That's my two cents, so.
Well, the one thing that this process has accomplished is, all the rates are better. And so, in that sense, it is a savings to the community, which, that I very much appreciate. I have to say, I am skeptical about the customer service aspect. I can't help it. I am. And in that sense, you know, I feel that, that maybe the next best bid, which was CNS, may be the better choice for our community moving forward. It's just, I, I have a hard time with the fact, I'm really struggling with the fact that customer service issues were asked, went unanswered, we addressed them over and over again, it bothers me, why will it... It bothers me, why will it change now all of a sudden? So I'm looking to the future of how we best help the community through this. And so maybe that's with a change.
What she said. I can't, I can't, I've lived here a dozen years. I got another slice in my, today was pickup at my house. Got another slice from the grippers in my green barrel. Doesn't mean I'm going to vote because of that, but it doesn't surprise me. I've already put duct tape on that a couple times. I know I could get a new one. This is a lot like cable vision back in the day. I mean, you get the vendor, they're there, they take you for granted till it comes up again and then they're going to promise you everything and you'll get what you get. Now, you're right, it's going to be in the contract, but the contract still hasn't been negotiated. And you got it in the RFP that that's the way the negotiations are going to go. But it's going to be tough for me to swallow 15 more years. This is a large corporate company. If it were run by Jeff Bezos, I'm talking about the top, the top one. If it were run by Jeff Bezos, I think I'd probably get customer service. I just don't know if I'm going to get customer service going forward from the top vendor. So I would at least like to talk to the top two or go where Karen's saying she wants to go.
Try a motion.
So I just want to, I just think we need to talk this out and maybe us voicing some of our opinions will help us go where we need to go, whatever that might be. So when I asked the questions of waste management on their customer service, I'm going to admit to you that I was disappointed. Okay? So I expected a much more fervent action out there that, you know, we're dedicated and we've heard you and we're going to do this now. And maybe something as simple as saying, and I know this sounds dumb, but I got to tell you, something as simple as you telling me, I'm going to put a sticker on all of our garbage cans with the local phone number because the local customer is the most important thing to waste management as a company. So it's a simple little thing you could have told me at the table. So I just, I need to give you honest feedback that I'm not hearing that the customer is the most important person to you. And I don't know if it's, but I did hear that out of the other two companies, right? The other two came up and said that that's what drives them as a company. But I'm also with the mayor in all honesty as I'm sitting here going, oh my gosh, how do I overcome a million and a half dollars times 15 years for my community? And so I am truly struggling with what the right answer is because ultimately we owe it to the residents of Carson City to make the best possible choice. And so I'm not sure that negotiating with both of them, because they both have a barrier. As far as I'm concerned, both of you have a barrier, right? Your price isn't as good and your customer service wasn't as good. Now, in negotiations, can I overcome your customer service issues by something as simple as I just said, right? Gosh, that's really an easy answer. Every single customer in Carson City is getting a sticker with the lovely woman that's lived here for 18 years. I'm giving them, was it Judy? I'm sorry if I'm wrong. Sue. I'm giving them Sue's phone number because waste management is here to serve the customer of Carson City. And so I just don't feel good today because I didn't get a warm fuzzy there. But I think you're capable because I think your employees live here too. So I don't want to diminish that. I think the people in the room probably all live in this area and are residents of Carson City or the surrounding areas. So I just need more comfort that we're doing the right thing. Does that make sense?
Well, at the end of the day, we have to make a decision. I mean, I don't know if we're ever going to get to the comfort level of what we're saying there.
That's true, too.
And, because customer service is, to a degree, is in the eye of the holder. Generally, they're, you know, not always, but there are two sides to every story. And, you know, when it gets right back to us, we need to have the customer service and we need to have the most efficient rates we've got. And you're absolutely right, there's a large difference in the rates. And frankly, I feel, you know, under the circumstances we're in now, I think it's not fair to any of them, particularly the low bidder, to come in and say, okay, now you can, we'll fix your rates for you because, you know, we're really after customer service, but now we're going to want, we want you to reduce your rates. I don't know how you do that. I mean, with a straight face. And the other thing is, why do you only pick two? Pick three. Pick four. Pick five. Pick all of them. They all, because according to what you said, they're all good. And obviously, you know, you made a decision about customer service when it was part of the process. That's your analysis. You know, there's, I said it before, in the pit of my stomach, there's concern about that customer service level. But it's not, it doesn't rise to the level where I don't think it can't be handled by a contract that has sufficient teeth in it that says this is important and this is what's going to happen if you don't have good customer service. And second, I think that, again, it's a million and a half dollars just on one customer base. Pretty hard to overcome that. And I'm not going to ask that somebody come up here and say, well, another company can come up and say, well, I'll just drop my rates to what they are because you haven't had the benefit of looking at, you know, whether or not that's even feasible from a standpoint of, because you've looked at the background of these folks as to what they can and can't do. And I assume that, I assume that the rates that they came up with, you're pretty comfortable that they can meet and that they were not excessive. Is that right or wrong?
The rates of the...
The rates that they all proposed, that they were not, none of them were excessive in terms of what they could otherwise sharpen their pencil to get to.
I'm...
In other words, there's no room to trail what he's asking.
Oh, they're not, I, I am, it's difficult to negotiate here. However, if you were, if you were to ask my, I guess you're asking my opinion, I wouldn't negotiate with more than the top two. There's, there is a delta. I mean, is, if you look at the rates of, you know, the, Bracology is, again, phenomenal company, but that is a, that is a difference there. It's not, it's not quite the same. So I, if you were to direct negotiation with more than one, I would, I would recommend limiting it to the top two or having requirements for the outcomes and to go...
How do you do that when, how do you do that when you're talking about the rate side of stuff? Because that's where this is going to come up, come or fall. I mean, I assume that folks made their best, best rate design when they filed it with us. If they didn't, then that's a different issue. And I, let me phrase it like this. If you were told to go negotiate with waste management and you couldn't come to an agreement on something, you can always go to the second one and negotiate there. Is that right or wrong? So in a sense, you've got both of them that you're negotiating with anyway, in a way. Unless I'm misreading what's going on there.
Yes, not the same.
Well, why not? Why not?
If, not when you do a real negotiation with both, Bob, because then they're both going to get to come back with their best offer. And I guess, you know, both get to sharpen whatever component, maybe waste management improves the customer service, even if something as simple as I just said, right? And shows us that they're meaningful and the other one says, ooh, I was good on everything but the rate, so maybe I lower my... Or they just bow out anyway and say, there's no way I'm going to get to the rate.
On that one, hang on, words up here, just a minute. No, no, we got a deal up here. That's okay, Dan, come on. At the end of the day, what you're suggesting is that, you know, we go back and renegotiate on price. And if we're going to do that, I think that's unfair to the bidders who, the low bidder on this one, because now everybody knows their numbers. We know, our staff knows, all the basics there. And I think that's unfair for us to do that.
I agree with that.
And so, you know, my sense is, you know, even though I've got the concerns about customer service, from a fiduciary standpoint, I don't think I've got a whole lot of choice but to go with the lowest rates and assume that the customer service can get handled through a contract. Because otherwise, you know, I'm looking at, and I know Learned Hand over here, he and I disagree a lot, but I, but, but, hang on, let me shut this off just a minute. This is waste management.
I'm giving you a direct phone number from above.
Here is my personal phone number.
My personal phone number. No, I'm just saying that, you know, I think it is unfair. I mean, because now everybody knows what their numbers are. So what are we doing? I mean, I'm just walking into a litigation trap because for me, were I, you know, were I representing waste management and I did that, I'd say, you know what, I'm going to go to court because, you know, you can't, you can't force me to make one my lowest and best and then give the numbers out there. But even though this is not a bid, this is a proposal. I mean, I don't know how you do that. Maybe I was all wet, but Learned Hand, you can be quiet. I am just kidding you, Dan. Just kidding you. All right. All right. So Board?
Mr. Mayor.
Go. Shoot, shoot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once a while back when I was in a different profession, and I use that word loosely, in a different craft, I heard someone say in Carson City, often around here we go on the cheap and I'm not always sure it serves us the best. And those are words of wisdom that I remember. I like going on the cheap, don't get me wrong. I'm always looking for that cheapest bottle of wine. But I also used to go to the horse track, got smartened up and didn't do that. I still drink wine. But at the horse track, I found that the problem, the problem was that there were too many different equations involved. I think we have too many different equations here. You couldn't figure out whether the jockey was going to, you know, et cetera. You didn't figure out whether the horse had good feed. There are a lot of things we don't know, even with the great work that we've had from our consultant and our lawyers and our public work staff. But when you have a track record, and that's what I'm talking about when I talk about the horse track, when you have a track record, you kind of have to look at it. And we have a track record from our current vendor. And I tell you, one of my biggest horrors in getting into this business, from the one I used to be in, is that the vendors come and they'll promise you anything, but they won't give you arpege. And I just don't think that I can, you may be right, Mayor, I don't want to get in on the litigation, so my vote's going to go for the number two.
Okay. Try a motion.
Well, somebody will make a motion.
Well, I think, well, I tell you what, okay, well, I'll tell you what. Let's try this. If the Board wants to, we got four of us here, we got to make three, three got to, I think it's three or is it two? Dan?
We need three.
We need three. We need three.
We'll need three on the record.
You know, we could try this. Somebody want to try and make a motion to adopt a staff recommendation? Anybody want to do that?
Go ahead.
You don't want to do it?
That's obvious.
You don't want to do it? All right, somebody else make a motion then.
I'll make a motion.
I move to determine that CNS has proposed the best value for collection services in response to the request for proposals issued June 26, 2018, and to direct staff to enter into negotiations with CNS for solid waste and recyclable materials exclusive franchise collection services.
There's a motion, there's a motion, there's a second. A motion, discussion.
I'm going to just tell you, I'm truly struggling.
I know.
I don't know what to say to the community as a whole. This is a really...
We set this all up to put you on the bubble, Mary.
Yeah, I feel like it. I'm like, woo, my hot seat. I think I traded Learned Hand this time. I gave him a hot seat last week, so I think I did it to myself this time. What I'm struggling with is really what the mayor said. I, I just, a million and a half is huge, times 15 years to give up in money in the community, that those businesses contribute in the community. So the struggle that I have is what I said earlier, and I'm trying to look out at the providers of the service and I'm looking for, are you taking us serious? Because that's just what you're saying. Are you taking us serious? And I need that customer service is equally is important. It's not just money. And I think I on the end agree with Bob. I think you have the ability. It's will you do it? Will you make customer service important? Because that's the only way I can vote for you, right? Because ultimately, part of my problem is I'm kind of a money girl. That's who I am. And I look at the answers across the community and I think, oh my gosh, 1.5 million times 15 years is, you know, like you said, $22 million. And what can those businesses reinvest that $22 million in versus trash service? And I guess that's the other issue, is what do we get as a gain if they have the $22 million staying in our community and not going? I guess I have to look at that too, right? I'm trying to weigh it, going, wait, that's 22 million that stays in my community, so I'm struggling.
Yes.
All right.
Yes, I'm convincing. I agree, and that's hard. But like I said before, I also feel the commercial is still realizing a cost savings as opposed to what was before. That's number one. Number two, most of the customers are residential and they're not really realizing that cost savings. So they are saving money on the other end of this as well, and I just feel it's the best value for where we're going.
Can I clarify? Do you have the numbers on the commercial customers? Because I actually think I asked that earlier to determine, am I talking about 500? I thought the number was actually pretty large. Because I think I remember before when we were doing the RFP that I was surprised how many commercial customers we had.
Thank you. Every time. The way that the proposal is set up is based on services and frequency. So it's bins and frequency to bid that way. So you may have a customer that has four bins and another that has a 96 gallon cart, so it's not based on number of how many services. And, you know, we're looking at less than 2,000, we're looking at probably about 1,500 services versus, you know, 16,000 to 18,000.
So are you saying that could be one customer with two pickups would count as two services? If he gets his yard dumpster picked up twice?
Sure. Well, no, it's, that's the number of, that's the number of, there's a single services if you get it four times a week, so it's more than that. But there could be a customer that has three bins that go four times a week. So that's three services. It's actually 12 services, but it's one customer. So it's, it's not, it's not divided that way.
You don't, you didn't help me. I got it. I'm truly looking for discerning issues to help drive where I'm going because ultimately I need to tell people...
Well, I mean, there's one, you know, what we're missing, that's the wrong way of saying that. You know, this is a new franchise agreement that has mandatory pickup involved in it. And I'd ask the makers of the motions to say to me, this is mandatory, we're going to make a whole lot of people pay other money that they haven't been paying before because we don't like the customer service of the prior guy, even though they gave better rates. How do you do that? I mean, you know, we're, so we're essentially saying, we're going to, we're going to make everybody pay, but we're not going to have them start at the lowest rate that we had possible to get at. And that's the fiduciary problem that I run into, that I think is serious enough for me to say, I can't vote for going down the road of just picking willy-nilly the second, the second best, even though they're great, they're great folks. I think that we have to respect the process in a way and we have to respect what's out there, otherwise... there. Otherwise, you know, we're dealing with a situation where, okay, we don't like it, we don't like the customer service, but on the other hand, there's, there are financial and economic issues that are out here that are based on money. And, you know, when we're making a major change in this community about where we're going to go on mandatory collection, I think it's incumbent upon us to pick the lowest rate we can so that the burden is the least on all of our citizens. And we're not doing that if we pick the second one, because the rates are higher. Maybe marginally higher, but they're higher. So I think, you know, for the people who are making the motion, I'd like to hear how you get over that.
Why are my lights on?
Shoot.
Well, you get over it by the fact that any, in any situation where you have money involved, let's say, incoming and outgoing, or what am I buying and what am I not buying? You make a determination of what you're buying. I have seen the track record of the previous vendor who wants to be the incumbent and the new vendor. Won't be a new vendor, will be the same vendor. So I have something to look at. I also have something to look at, which is how much they charged during that previous contract and how much they did for it. So when I go in to buy that bottle of wine I've been using as an example and analogically, I have either had the wine before or I take a risk. I've gotten to the point with this situation where I'm much happier taking risks. But I'm not in business, I'm not in commercial sector, where I might feel quite different about it. But Karen is correct. The CNS is lower than the vendor that we're about to leave behind if we do this. The cost to our people will be less just because the previously poor service, I call them that, vendor says, "Oh, I can do it cheaper," doesn't give me a lot of confidence that he'll do it better. That's my answer to your question. I understand what you're saying. You're not wrong. But we're not sticking our commercial people with higher rates. We're just not going to the lowest that we're offered.
Has anybody checked the background of any of the complaints that any of the other vendors have had in other jurisdictions?
It depends on the jurisdiction. But the CNS has a really phenomenal track record, and Recology does as well. I would, I just would say this one piece as, hopefully, a piece of point of information is the incumbent wasn't precluded from participating in the process. A new level of service was designed and required, and that is the, that is what we had to look at. We could look at prior service level as one part of an entire piece, but we didn't just look at price, we looked at everything. And when looking at everything, that we ended up with our recommendation. So we, if it would have likely, well, we'd be having a different conversation, were there not material changes to the requirements of this new contract? If it was just, again, one company's word, but no material changes? So that's something to keep in mind. But again, this is why it is not a bid process, because there's so many factors outside of price. And this is why you have the ability to make any choice that you prefer, because it's not a bid.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, and I just want to say I apologize, because I think I may have misheard the original motion. So just to clarify, so I know, the motion was to recommend CNS as the best value, correct? Okay. So, you know, I apologize. I must have misheard that, and I think it was because the mayor was distracting me with all of his heckling. But I, so I'm really appreciative of the fact that the discussion went on for as long as it did for me to catch that. I need to advise the board that we cannot take that, we can't vote on that motion. And the reason why is because we're constrained by the language that appears on the agenda. So the way I see it is, the board has one of two options today. You can make that recommendation, you know, as it appears on the agenda, and because that's what's actually listed, and we're confined to that. And if the motion fails 2 to 2, then we're back to the drawing board. The other alternative would be to take no action today, and that would, in effect, operate as a continuance of this matter. You can bring it back to the board then.
Well, what's that do? That just punts. I mean, that just delays the decision. Might as well just jump in the briar patch and get stuck. So...
I'd like to avoid the briar patch.
I understand. So you're saying that the motion may be out of order?
That's correct.
All right. Maker of the motion, want to withdraw the motion?
I withdraw the motion.
Second?
I will draw the second, though, under protest of, as a matter of fact, the council has just said why I don't make motions, basically.
So then the question is, do you want to make a motion then to, along the staff report? Or do you want to just delay it? I don't know that there's another alternative today. I mean, you can delay it. My own sense is, is that we're just creating another problem when you delay it.
The pain just continues.
This board is a great board, and, you know, they've all got four great brains. Brad's got a great brain, too. He's on the sideline.
He just can't use it now.
Can't use his brain now. So that's my two cents to you. So, you know, either we have a motion that goes, you know, for Waste Management, you know, follow the staff report, or we just table it and see where it goes.
I'll make the motion.
All right, go on.
I make, I move the motion as stated on the staff report.
For discussion and voting purposes, but I probably won't support my own second when we take the vote.
Want to discuss or just vote?
I have one discussion point.
Sure.
I thought about this really hard, because one of the things we also discussed was, how was Waste Management able to sharpen their pencil so well? So have they been taking advantage of the Carson City residents for so long? Have you been taking, you know, a big profit that maybe you shouldn't have? But then I recalled something, that Waste Management was never the actual proposer. You, and again, I think you guys missed your own opportunities here, so I'm going to help a little bit on this one. You took over from Capital Sanitation, so they took a bid and an agreement that was in place. So to hold them responsible, now they've sharpened their pencil, probably because there was competition. I'm not going to pretend it's because there wasn't competition. But I do want to say, that's what was negotiated all those years ago under Capital Sanitation. And I think that's important for the public to recognize Waste Management took a contract over. And so they just adhered to the contract. And we have as much duty from the city side to write good contracts. And so I also would say, I'm comfortable with the other groups, because they even said they might not take the CPI. I'm positive that Waste Management will. And so, because again, you're a corporate company, so you're just going to follow the contract. Can I get that? So I just wanted to put on the record, though, that they were not the bidders last time, in fairness.
But Lori, you bring up a very good point, and that is the CPI, whereas the others are not as inclined. So what are we saving here? I just put that out there.
Well, you don't know that. I mean, you've got, you have a proposal that has a CPI built into it.
But they don't have to take it.
Well, they don't have to, neither does Waste Management. So I don't get what that...
Right. It's may.
May.
When you're going to do your final negotiations even, it's may take, not to exceed, dah dah dah.
We can't evaluate based on...
No, no, no. I'm saying in the contract negotiations, though, the language is "may" up to. It's not a mandatory that they...
It's incumbent upon the company to submit their annual CPI.
Well, and at the end of the day, I mean, you know, rather than CPI, I'd prefer just a full-blown rate case. I mean, if we're going to get, if we're going to go down that road, who's willing to, you know, who can afford to sharpen their pencil? Then I want to have a full-blown rate or return case that says, "Let's take a look at all our operations. I want to know what they're making, and I want to know if that's a reasonable amount of money." I'm not going to go there, but I think, you know, that's where we go, where we're saying, and you have to have some mechanism for cost, time, value of money, which is CPI. I mean, you have to have something that goes down that road.
The CPI and the length of the agreement is what allows companies to sharpen their pencil. That's, I mean, that's how it's constructed, and we can't extract individual components and think that there would necessarily be the same result.
All right.
All right.
We can always go 2-2, and then we'll come back.
No.
I mean, then we'll come back and negotiate, and we can revise the staff note, you know.
We're still discussing.
Sure, discuss, go.
Well, I probably am repeating myself, but I'll just put it in four words. Past, higher price, lower service, capital sanitation or not. Future, lower price, higher service, question mark.
Let me ask you this. Does that apply to all the vendors? And how do you know that?
I, the other vendors didn't give us poor service yet.
No, but how do you know that they, how do you know that they, how do you know that they wouldn't?
I don't. I don't. I just said, "I'll drink that bottle of wine and buy another one later." I like it.
Just trying to figure, how do you know that Waste Management won't then? Because you've got a track record, I get that. But they're on contract now, saying they're going to. So I'm just trying to figure out, you know...
In our capital markets, companies that are public answer to, as somebody out there mentioned at one point, quarterly reports and CEOs and boards that aren't as smart as this one usually. And they are in the business, and they are in the business of making money. I don't blame Waste Management for taking what they got from Capital Sanitation. I don't blame them for taking the money. I do question why they didn't provide the service, because that's what put them in this situation today with a 2-2 vote situation.
And I will just say, I want to save the money for the businesses. I get that. I just have to be confident that the level of customer service is going to be there, because that has been the phone calls, the dealing with it, all the rest of it. I appreciate that, you know, you've responded to Mr. Rick Cooley with regards to calls and so forth, but it goes above and beyond that. And so that's my biggest quandary, is that, because we have to do what's best. This is a 15-year contract. It's a big deal.
Going to be with the company 15 years? That's it, right?
All right, guys, I don't know that we're going to make anybody happy today.
There is no happiness.
There is no happiness.
Yeah.
I mean, okay, all right. On the motion, we've got, there's a motion and a second. On the motion, you want further discussion?
Could you clarify? The motion is to negotiate with Waste Management, right?
The motion is to accept the staff, the staff motion.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
All right. All right. On the motion, all in favor, signal of a saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. No. Motion passes 3 to 1. All right. I didn't get mine, and is that on here?
And I truly hope that my suggestion was a very simple one, that you can implement. I mean, right? That's going to show every customer that you care.
All right, folks. For all of you out there, this game may not be over, so just stand by. This is how democracy works. I mean, this is, I mean, if people think that, you know, we're all trying to figure out the best way to go, I think that you see, you know, we're all concerned about the same thing, customer service and doing the right thing by our community, and so we'll go from there. All right. Well, now can take concluding public comment, concluding public comment at the end of the meeting. Anybody? You can come up and rag on us, too, if you're a vendor, too. Come on. Brett, right?
Brett Hanson, district manager for Carson City. I just want to say, I understand that your concerns. And I promise you that me and my staff are going to do absolutely everything that we can to improve the service that we have and do it well. We have a veteran team that's been here for years and years and years, and we'll do right by you.
I truly hope that it was communications from your Phoenix office not getting to Carson City, and that when we have your local phone numbers, you'll be responsive. I mean, that's my true hope.
That's what's going to happen.
All right. Any other public comment? Dan?
I'll be brief. I just wanted to thank everybody here for the incredible amount of effort they put into asking questions and the thoughtfulness in this. You've represented your community well, and I appreciate you taking the time to listen to all of us, and just wanted to leave you at this. We truly are a community partner, and like the consultant said, our record is phenomenal. There isn't a community that we serve that wouldn't say that. And, you know, and like I said, you know, when you look at a value proposition like you talked about, and I'm looking at this table, you know, when it comes to total cost, we were second. You know, so when you combine that with the value proposition that you're asked about, I fully believe that we can provide a value at that number to this community that cannot be met by our competitors, and I thank you for all of your time and thoughtfulness today.
Well, let me tell you, Dan, you're a credit to your company, and you're a credit to the United States Navy.
Well, go Navy, because I'm going to be at the game on the second set.
You are a credit. And, all right. Anybody else? Hard decision, folks. So, you know, these things, and Greg, you know, you got the message.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Crystal clear.
Crystal clear. All right. Anybody else? Anything else? Dan, we okay? All right. Going once on concluding public comment. Anybody? I don't see any, so unless there's an objection, we'll be adjourned.